I call to order the City of Woodenville Planning Commission special meeting for Wednesday, September 11th, 2024. May we have the roll call, please?
Chair Stadler.
Here.
Vice Chair Yarbov.
Here.
Commissioner Young. Commissioner Cheryna Morikov.
Here.
Commissioner Liang.
Here.
Commissioner Mesa.
Here.
Commissioner Krebs.
Here.
Okay, we are all here, very good. Welcome to our two new commissioners. Will you please rise and join me in the flag salute? Completing the flag salute, please remain standing as we observe a moment of silence in those who perished on 9/11. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, now we will move on to our agenda. Are there any changes in order and content of the agenda tonight? Hearing none, we have our agenda set. First item is public comments. When I call your name, please come forward, state whether you live in the city of Woodenville or not, and you will have three minutes. First up is Ahmad Amiri. Welcome, Mr. Amiri.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ahmad Amiri, and I have lived in Woodenville for 35 years. I'm here to provide my comments to the city housing plan. I believe the city should use multifaceted facet approach to address the housing shortage. As I see it, the city has primarily addressed its housing needs by focusing on big development, by big developers in city core, but has missed opportunity to encourage a small private development and subdivision by current property owners. In my case, although I have an acre of unused properties zoned R8, I don't have the opportunity to subdivide my property due to outdated restriction imposed on subdivision on private street. Currently, the city transportation standards limit subdivision on private street to maximum of four homes. To make matters worse, city permitting officials are prohibited from provide any variance or deviation from this standard. Historically, many residential streets in Woodenville were initially built as private roads, and limitation on private street has been placed since at least the 1990s. A lot has changed since then. I believe Woodenville should follow example of several neighboring cities that have relaxed their limitation on private roads. As I understand, Bellevue now allow for up to nine lots, Bothell allows for eight, Isico and Kirkland provide any number on case-by-case basis. I understand the initial motivation to encourage public street development for new projects, but for many existing private roads, converting to public street is impossible. Revising the current standard to allow for more flexibility would provide desperately needed housing, allow homeowners to make the best use of their property, encourage development, and infill on unused lands and increase revenue for the city. Even a slightly increasing capacity of private street, the city could conservatively add several hundred or more homes to the city stock, all without any rezoning or adding any additional traffic to its core. For this reason, I believe the city should reevaluate and revise the current restriction to its place on its homeowner as part of comprehensive housing plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Amiri. I will mention that in order for us to take that up, it has to be put on our work plan by the city council, so make sure you share those comments with the city council as well, because they will need to put it.
I will do that. This is not just, I've somehow, if I'm here, after, I actually live here more than 35 years. I have raised seven kids in high school right here, and I have seen a lot. But one of the things that encouraged me to come forward to watching you, I've been watching you, and I have, I would tell you that the officials here, it seems like it all following your examples. Really, it doesn't matter from the city managers to Mr. D'Souza or Mr. Grumbach, even though I have a, how can I say that? There are certain things that I might be, hard for me to communicate with him, but I find him, I respect him for his ability to communicate back to me. Therefore, more and more, I see that I must be part of the whole thing, and you'll see me and you will hear from me regardless of what you make a decision. And I appreciate it, and I'm going to tell you, you all have very large, this is my opinion, very large personalities, and you're allowed to, people come in and you are patient, and I've seen that, and that's what encouraging me to come and talk to you folks.
Thank you, Mr. Amiri.
And I see that you care about people.
Thank you.
And that's what's important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else care to make public comment? With that, we will go to Council liaison report. Welcome Mayor Millman, and you have as long as you need.
Thank you, Commissioners. I wanted to welcome our newest Commissioners, a familiar face, Commissioner Young, and I'm sorry, Mick, I do not want to mess up your last name, so for now, it's Mick until I learn, until I learn how to get that better. So, I wanted to start by, last meeting, we discussed the West Point project, and I had asked earlier, do we have that rendering? So, this is in the DA from 2019, and there was a lot of, you know, it was a pretty raucous meeting, and there was a lot of information, some of it not really good information. This is from the Woodenville Drive side, or the northeast-ish side. As you can see, it's seven floors, 161 units. To characterize the discussion with council, most, what was most persuasive, I believe, I can't speak for everybody, but that current project added 1,600 daily vehicle trips to an area that we already have in a failing intersection. It's already rated a D or an F, either one is failing, I'm not sure, or D or an E. And the benefits of the townhomes that we pivoted to were, and some of the stuff you didn't have an opportunity to discuss, or it never came up, is my understanding, was, we're able to restrict or confine the single-family or the residential, ground-floor residential to that one block, so it doesn't spill over into the rest of the old town or the CBD. That was, that was a big benefit. The fact that we were getting 10% of the units at affordable rates to count toward our affordable mandate was persuasive. The developer came and said that they were going to build four of the units at about $375,000, I believe was the number, which is, in Woodenville is pretty, pretty good. And those are all ownership opportunities, which was another persuasive argument. And then also for me, this DA was capped, the school impact fees were capped at $50,000 for some reason. This, the new project will, will give the North Shore School District three times that number, or approximately $150,000. So, for all those reasons, and maybe some voted, weighed one of those differently than I did, but those are all the arguments for that. So, I just wanted to come back with you guys and tell you a little bit about that conversation, and if you're sleepy, go ahead and call it up on the city website and watch it. It was a, we went till 11 o'clock that night, so. We discussed transportation impact fees, and the discussion basically centered around having, updating our traffic, our transportation impact fees to reflect paying for new projects and, and paying for some of our road issues or traffic issues, but also not to the point where it would kill businesses forming, which is important to city council. We discussed a NERTS response letter on their socioeconomic impact statement, and we had a new wetland delineation. So, Matthews Lumber over there, they, they own that, that section, that flat lot where it has, does have wetlands on it. About a year and a half, two years ago, well, about two years ago, I think it was, we had a, we had a very hot stretch, and county came out and said, it's no longer wetlands. So, it was very welcome that Matthews Lumber provided a, an updated wetland survey, and it actually expanded from what it was how many ever years ago. And it was a, I can't remember the term they used, which I'm not that familiar with, a category four or something like that. It sounded like a hurricane, but I don't, I don't know what that means as far as wetlands. So, we're going to forward that to the county, and we're pushing back on the socioeconomic part. I think there's lots of stuff that they did not include in theirs. And lastly, I'm pretty excited, October 24th, we're going to have a joint public spaces, planning, and council meeting. And at this meeting, we're going to have a guest speaker. Our guest speaker is somebody that Brandon has seen make the circuits with city manager groups when he goes on, on some of his trips, and Brandon doesn't gush, ever, but this guy, he says, is really good. So, I mean, he would probably take offense to me saying he's gushing, but in Brandonese, he gushes over this guy, says he's a really good speaker. The intent is to get everybody together. We have lots of grant money and projects to imagine our East Rail Corridor, and our parks and trails and all that stuff. So, that's what this guy's specialty is. He's going to, he's going to kick off the meeting and talk very early to kind of get everybody's juices going and figuring out how best to imagine where our city's going and what we can do. So, really excited about that. I think tentatively, it's about 5:30 on the 24th, but don't put in pen the 5:30 part. So, anyway, that's, I hope that's enough. That's all I got for tonight.
Any questions for the mayor? Nope. Thank you, Mr. Millman.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for your work.
All right, moving on to business and discussion items. The first item is a study session on the North Shore School District Six-Year Capital Facility Plan. Looks like we have some friends in the house. Mr. Grumbach, do you want to lead us off?
We do. Dylan was originally supposed to do this presentation with them tonight, but he wasn't unable to make it. So, anyway, as mentioned, North Shore School District wants to present their latest capital facilities plan, and so Denise, I believe, is going to come on up here and do that. I got control of the presentation. I'll bring that up here in a second. You just got to find, that must be it right there.
Thank you, Robert. Denise Stifarm, and I am with Pacifica Law Group, and I work with the North Shore School District on their capital facilities plan. I'm also joined this evening by Chelsea Starkey and Dre Ralph from the North Shore School District. Chelsea's going to have a few words, and Dre is here for backup as we need her. And I know that many of you have heard a version of our presentation in previous years, but I also recognize a couple of newer members. And so, big picture, the North Shore School District Capital Facilities Plan is a plan that is updated every year. It's prepared and presented to each jurisdiction that the district sits within, of which there are five. And the intent is that it is ultimately adopted by reference into the city's comprehensive planned capital facilities element, and is used as a basis for school impact fees should the capital facilities plan support that. The, as always, Dylan has prepared a very thorough memo, and it provides you with very good background. Big, kind of top line, what the capital facilities plan does is it looks at the district enrollment over the next six years, which is the planning period. It looks at the district's existing capacity, and then it looks at what planned capacity improvements the district may have, and how those may be related to expected growth. So, turning to the first slide and talking about enrollment, as you probably know, the pandemic had quite an effect on enrollment on all school districts, not only in the region, but across the state. North Shore School District, prior to the pandemic, had been experiencing very robust growth, at about 400 students per year coming into the system. That suspended a bit during the pandemic and the years following, but has now started to stabilize. And in fact, looking forward through the year 2030, the district expects those enrollment gains to pick up quite a bit, and really hit about 300-plus students per year over that next, next six-year planning period. What this means is that there are new students expected to enter into district schools. They expect growth at all three grade levels, a little bit more at the high school and the elementary level, and so they are continuing to plan for that growth as it occurs. One of the things that is important when we look at growth is where it's occurring. And for this school district, which sits within unincorporated Snohomish County, unincorporated King County, and the cities of Bothell, Woodenville, and Kenmore, they are seeing a lot of growth in the northern and the central areas of the school district. Turning to the next slide, one of the, the second element that we look at is existing capacity. And here we have a district map, and we show where the district's current facilities sit throughout the school district. And again, you're seeing variation based upon jurisdictions. And what the district has intentionally done with the last few bond proposals and moving forward is try to eliminate, to the maximum extent possible, the use of portables at school sites and building in that permanent capacity for students. And with the 2018 bond and now the 2022 bond projects, they really are seeing that in action. Going forward to the next slide, this is what is in the current plan in terms of planned projects. It's, for those of you who saw this last year, it looks very similar, and that's because it's based upon that 2022 bond passed by the voters. And so, you will see that there are, in addition to modernization of school sites, there are added capacity, so added permanent classrooms across the district at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. For purposes of this area, you're most interested in capacity additions at Leota Middle School, but also at Wooden Elementary School, which serves Woodenville residents, students as well. What this analysis of the enrollment, the existing facilities, and the planned projects tells us in the capital facilities plan is that the district does have growth-related needs that are eligible for school impact fees. And while I know that the Planning Commission doesn't necessarily look specifically at the impact fees, they are an important part of the capital facilities plan documents. I'll just touch on those a bit. And in general, the legal framework is set out within the Growth Management Act, and then also adopted in the city's code. There is a school impact fee ordinance incorporated into the code at Section 3.38. There is a required formula that determines the proportionate share of the cost of new facilities related to growth. So, we want to identify for each new home, each new apartment, each new townhome, how are they impacting school district capacity, and what is that related cost? So, the formula does that proportionate share to identify a cost per dwelling unit. And one thing that's important to remember is, by law, that formula requires us to credit the fee payer for any other funds that the district intends to receive or anticipates receiving from other sources. So, in this case, we give what's called a tax payment credit, and that anticipates what that new homeowner will pay towards the school construction bond over a period of time. So, we're not double-charging them for the same improvement. The other credit factor is dollars that the district expects to receive from the state through the School Construction Assistance Program. And in this case, in the last legislative session, the state actually increased the percentage of that funding, which was a good thing. So, that credit has went up slightly in the impact fee formula. Important things to remember about impact fees is they're only charged to new development. So, it's when someone comes in to get their building permit. For school impact fees, it's only new residential development, not commercial. And then, the fees themselves can't be used to address existing capacity problems already in the system. It has to benefit the new growth. So, if the district is doing some catch-up in other areas, impact fees are not funding those types of improvements. And then, in addition to that, by law, impact fees cannot be the sole funding source. There needs to be a balance with local funds and other funding, and in this case, the bond measure is the primary funding source for most capital improvements. State funds also provide an additional source. So, for this year's school impact fee, the district has incorporated growth-related projects at three of the high schools. These are all capacity additions, and then capacity additions at six, excuse me, five of the elementary schools. Sorry, six. I'm having trouble. I knew that I was probably right the first time, at six of the elementary schools. So, those are the projects that are included within the impact fee formula, and provide the basis for us to determine, again, what is that cost per dwelling unit to address new development needs. And then, moving towards where we end up, looking at that formula, we have fees for single-family detached units, fees for townhome units, and I'll come back to that one in a moment, and then fees for multifamily, so your traditional stacked apartment condos. And in the city of Woodenville, the council several years ago made a determination that that applies only to those units with two bedrooms or more. For the townhome category, several years ago, the district started to notice that student generation, which really drives that proportionate share, looked different for townhomes. And what student generation is, is it's looking at recent development within the last five-year period, matching building permits to student addresses, and seeing, on average, how many students are being generated from new development. And that's a key driver in the impact fee formula, because it tells us, when someone builds a new home or a new townhome, how many students the district can expect to come out of that new dwelling unit, and that provides us with a proportionate share once it's applied to the formula. So, for townhomes, the district has been tracking this closely. They definitely generate more students than a traditional apartment or condo, but still less than a single-family detached unit. And so, for purposes of the impact fee proposal, the district isolates the townhome costs in order to have a separate fee that is more proportional to those impacts. I'm going to pause, because I believe Chelsea wanted to add a few words about the projects at Leota and Wooden, but before I do that, if there's a specific question here, let's take that.
I believe Vice Chair Yarbov has a comment.
I'm looking, excuse me, I'm looking at the impact fee for multifamilies, $254. However, in the write-up, it says 2,547. Which one is correct?
It is $254.
I'm on page four of the, it'd be the second page of the summary from Dylan Roth put in, and it's in the top paragraph. So, it reads in the third line down.
I see it. On the second page of the staff report?
Yes.
In the top paragraph. I believe that is a typo. As calculated, the fee is $254.
If you go to the appendix of the attached capital facilities plan that they adopted, let's see, which page?
It's the very last page.
That actually would contain the actual numbers, and they have that there. Yeah, it shows for Woodenville. It has the $254 for apartment condos.
Page 51. Okay, so it's a typo then on the staff report. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Yarbov, for noticing that. I did not notice it in the staff report myself.
Nothing gets by him.
That's a good thing. I'm going to let Chelsea come up for a moment.
Before you go, Mick has a question. Go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to ask, the change of the fees, how in line it is with other cities and jurisdiction in your district? Is it a new thing you're doing with Woodenville, or it's already happened in other parts of your district?
Right now, all of the jurisdictions are reviewing this updated capital facilities plan and impact fees. So, we are, we're going through the process this fall with each jurisdiction for consideration of the updated fees. And, and every jurisdiction currently has fees in place from the previous capital facilities plan, based on the previous capital facilities plan.
I assume I can ask follow-up question, but you tell me if I cannot. What I'm really trying to understand, this change for townhome, that's like the major one. Is this specific change also happening right now in other places? So, we all reviewing that essentially at the same time, and you introduce that as a new change across all of the cities and jurisdictions?
Very good question, and there's an important distinction that each jurisdiction has its own ordinance, and most jurisdictions, all jurisdictions have a single-family detached fee and a multifamily fee. Snohomish County and the city of Woodenville are the only two currently that have a separate townhome fee. So, it is a distinction between the other jurisdictions with regard to the townhome.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome. I'm Chelsea Starkey. I'm with North Shore School District. Thank you, Denise, for the presentation. Today, I'm going to be talking to you about the two project scopes specifically. So, I'll be talking to you about Leota Middle School and also Wooden Elementary. So, these, once again, are the 22 bond projects that were presented to the community and passed and voted on in February of 2022. And so, looking at Leota Middle School, it is a two-phase project. So, right now, it is currently in its first phase, funded by the 22 bond. And in that phase, as you know, with the theme of the 22 bond is replacing temporary space with permanent space. So, with Leota Middle School, what we're going to be installing there is a three-story, 36-classroom building along the front. And that phase is going to be mostly just replacing portables, putting permanent classrooms in place, which is a huge relief. And also, that will increase capacity of about 159 students of permanent space. And in there is going to have some counseling support rooms. We're going to reorganize the building entry, which is great for ingress egress of the students. We're going to enhance some of the safety features and improve kind of overall the site circulation. Also, in that, we are going to include EV charging stations and gender-neutral Also, in that, we are gonna include EV charging stations and gender-neutral restrooms and align with some of the modern standards out of building whenever we're modernizing.
I have a question from Commissioner Mez.
Yeah, thank you. In the new buildings, will those have air conditioning in them?
Let me just take a look. No, I'm not sure with that one. It depends. Whenever you're installing a new HVAC system, you also have to take into consideration of the roof structure. So you can't just place a new HVAC system on an aging roof.
Well, I'm specifically asking for the new buildings.
The Leota Middle School. I'm not 100% sure on that. So I can take that offline and get back to staff on an answer with that.
Yeah, and the reason why I'm bringing it up is because I've gotten some comments from students, specifically at Woodinville High School, saying that it gets really hot, especially on the third floor, and that it impacts their ability to learn, basically. So I'm wondering, or suggesting, in the new buildings, if we can install air conditioning and at a future opportunity, look at retrofitting air conditioning to the other buildings.
Yeah, thank you so much for that comment, Commissioner Meza or Miza. I can understand that, you know, with our facility standards, whenever we're doing any modernization, it reflects against our facility standards. So I'll take that feedback back, because, yeah, understandably.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Also, that's only Phase 1 of that project. Phase 2, which is pending the presentation of Phase 2 Leota Middle School to the community for February of 2026. What we intend for that Phase 2 is looking at some of the non-classroom items, which would include a gym, library, administrative offices, a cafeteria, some of the outdoor facilities there. And so really, just wanna focus on the classroom in that first phase. So excited for that second phase, if we can do that. Moving on to Wooden Elementary, same thing. Our theme here is replacing temporary portable space with permanent classroom. This is a single-phase project. So though it's not located in the city of Woodinville, we serve a lot of city of Woodinville students there. And this location, we're gonna be replacing six portable classrooms and increasing capacity of 150 permanent seats. Also in that, we're gonna be doing a new music room, a new gym, and also converting the old gym into a commons area, and then improving site circulation and some additional parking at that site. Also, you know, that just speaks to the classrooms, some of the things, upgrading restrooms, doing that fire alarm system upgrade, and providing fully accessible playground, which will include which will increase inclusivity and safety of the playground. That's gonna be a real win for the students. Also, there will be a new elevator for that location. So just that is scope, project scope of the two projects. But I just wanna invite you all to Wooden Elementary's groundbreaking ceremony is Wednesday, October 9th at 5:00 PM. And I'll be connecting with city staff to send off the formal invite. So with that, any questions about the project scope?
Any questions on the projects? Looks like everybody's happy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
And that concludes your presentation? Okay. All right. And no action, this is just a study item, correct?
Correct. We'll be bringing this back for a hearing at your regular meeting in two weeks.
Perfect. Our next item is discussion on the comprehensive plan periodic review, capital facilities and utility elements, staff report.
While I get this pulled up, it's actually kind of a good one to do right after the school district's capital facilities plan, because that is, some of that is in there So as you mentioned already, we are gonna talk about the capital facilities and utilities element. And you reviewed and did an initial review of the goals and policies at your July, I think I have it somewhere, but your last meeting, last regular meeting. And so now we've got a draft of the whole element. I'm sure if you looked at it, you noticed it's not in the new formatting yet, but it will be shortly. So, but I wanted to get it out so everybody had a chance to look through it. So capital facilities and utilities element is a requirement of the comprehensive plan. There are actually two elements generally. But for this update of the comprehensive plan, we've decided to combine them into one to help reflect the fact that the city of Woodinville provides a lot of our services through contracts and coordination with other companies and jurisdictions and special districts. So as a reminder, the city is served by city facilities, but also regional facilities like State Route 522 and State Route 202, Sound Transit. King County provides different services, the North Shore School District, Woodinville Fire and Rescue, who's contracted to Eastside Fire and Rescue, King County Library System, the Water District, Puget Sound Energy Waste Management, and then other various telecommunication So each element in the Growth Management Act has a list of requirements. So capital facilities needs to have an inventory of existing facilities and locations, a forecast of future needs, the proposed locations and capacities of expanded or new capital facilities, a six-year plan that will finance them, and a requirement to reassess the land use element if the probable funding falls short of meeting the needs. And then the utility element is a little bit shorter. It's just general location, proposed location and capacity of all existing and proposed utilities, identify and work with other, and there's a requirement that we identify and work with other public entities, such as the special purpose districts, to gather and include that information. So to give you a sense of how this element is laid out, we've got an introduction, city vision, and then conditions and trends. And under that, we go through each of these categories. And in each of these categories, we meet those requirements, talking about the level of service, planned improvements, and opportu, oh, an inventory level of service planned improvements and opportunities, sorry. And then there's initiative and objectives, goals and policies, and the action plan. Also of note, where we felt like we could reasonably put in a map, we tried to add in more maps, as opposed to the older version, just because a lot of these service areas and different things are useful to see visually. We also, I should mention, reference or adopt by reference all the special districts, capital improvement plans or capital facility plans. So like the school district's capital facility plan, depending on your recommendation, will be adopted by reference. So currently, there is one adopted by reference, but we just saw the new one, so. And then, so from what you saw before, we've reorganized a little bit the goals and policies. And so there's a couple at the top that are really applied to both, and then capital facilities specific goals and utility specific goals. And I am not gonna go through every single one again, but you all are welcome to suggest edits or comments on all of them. I was just gonna cover, focus on some of the ones that are newer. And so there are several added from the last time, based on comments we received from Puget Sound Energy and the Climate Action Plan Integration Memo, and then some comments received from the Planning Commission when we looked at these previously. And this document that was passed out to you at the beginning of the meeting has little yellow boxes that helps explain where some of these came from or what some of these changes are. So looking, starting with the second goal there on your plan, this one is all pretty much new, and it's all to address some comments from Puget Sound Energy. And so it's talking about supporting local and regional efforts to equitably transition energy, infrastructure, and mitigate climate risks. And then there's a bunch of policies under it, one of which is from the Climate Action I'm not gonna read them all unless you want me to.
Vice Chair Yavroff.
Yeah, I guess I would like to emphasize one of the pieces. It's Policy CFU 2.4. And it talks about reducing the risk and impact of wildfires. Having been on a trip recently and coming, driving back through eastern Washington, we encountered heavy smoke from fires in Oregon and Idaho and from Canada. And it brings to the consciousness the continuing wildfires we see just about every year. And I guess I would like to emphasize and support whatever we can to help mitigate impact from wildfires. This might include some discussion by tree board about what we do with tree vegetation, tree management, and so forth. And one of the things I think I've mentioned sometime in the past is I hope we never need it, but I would like to see the city consider putting together an evacuation plan should we ever have a bad wildfire in areas where we have heavy vegetation.
So a couple of things to note. I think we did add something in the environmental element about wildfires as well. And then, I don't know if you know, Robert, we do have emergency management plans. They're a whole large binder. And we actually just did a emergency operations center staff training where we went through different scenarios and, you know, kind of just workshopped them. And so I think we are set up to at least try to get out information about evacuation routes. I don't know if you know for sure, Robert?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the specific, recall the specifics, but our emergency management plan tries to cover all the varieties of potential disasters that can, not just wildfires, but earthquakes, floods, other types of adverse weather and stuff like that. And so we do have an emergency plan put together on that. Like I said, I can't recall the specific details and stuff. And then staff, which includes the police, we do coordinate, and we do have training pretty regularly on that as part of the work we do on this. And I believe Kevin O'Neil, who's in charge of this, there is also a public component of it as well that gets involved with this. Again, Kevin can tell you a lot more about it because he's kind of the one that's managing the plan and stuff, but there are a lot of efforts. The other thing I'd note, too, is that the building code also has new requirements around the wildfire stuff, too. They suspended those for this round of updates because right now, the maps that are supposed to be setting up the wild, the interface between urban and wildfire stuff is still got a lot of work to go, and everybody was confused what it actually meant. So they're, they suspended it, but there will be new requirements that are actually coming up in construction codes to incorporate more mitigating measures for wildfire prevention or damage from wildfires and stuff, so.
Maybe we could also do some coordination with the fire department where they offer a service to homeowners to help them mitigate the possibility of fires near the house, which might mean, you know, changing the landscaping a little bit so that they don't have highly flammable things next to their home.
Yeah, I mean, the challenge, you know, we're gonna have with all of this ultimately is that, you know, our whole setting for Woodinville and the name and everything else is about trees and vegetation and wood and the wooded nature of the community and stuff. And so it's gonna be, you know, a challenge to start trying to figure out those balances on all of this.
I understand that. And anything we can do that would make a difference for homeowners not losing a home because they didn't understand the impacts of whatever they're planting and tree management, I think would be beneficial for the city and certainly for the citizens.
Thank you. When we get this comprehensive plan done, and kind of maybe get caught up a little bit, it'd be, I would welcome a briefing from probably Mr. O'Neil on this whole plan, and even possibly maybe giving us a tour of the EOC.
He'll be here at the next meeting, so there'll be an opportunity. I'll mention it to him, too, but he'll be here also at the next meeting.
We got a lot on our plate right now, so just when we have that little, put that as a placeholder when we have a dull meeting.
So just to let you know, the EOC is not, the tour wouldn't be very exciting. It's a bunch of desks, pretty much, in a room.
It's the Public Works Maintenance Shop.
But yes, you're...
Well taken.
Are there any other thoughts about this policy or goal, or would you like me to move on?
Seeing none, I think we can move on.
Perfect. We can always come back. I am going to send any comments we receive on these to our consultants tomorrow morning. And so, but if people have comments afterwards as well, we can always take those into consideration because we are trying to get a whole comp plan put together for you by the next meeting, so. So this goal was mostly just rewritten to make it a little bit more focused on capital facilities, so it fits under that category here. And then 3.1 was rewritten to accommodate suggestions from the Climate Action Integration Memo. And I think that it was just, I think it was just that adding the environmental sustainability there on the bottom of E, so pretty minimal changes. I guess I should have put this somewhere, but the underlined red text is all of the new text. In some cases, doing the cross-out, and underlined text got really, really messy, so I just went with, if it was new, we're gonna go underline in red. So that gives you an idea of what's new and what's old or existing. And so the next one, a lot of the next few are mostly, you know, with a few edits for clarity and readability, are mostly consistent with the existing comprehensive plan. Again, doesn't mean that we can't comment on it, but I just, because we've already been through it once, didn't want to put it all up on slides. And so the next one that I wanted to highlight was this CFU 10, and then C in specifically underneath 10-1, promote financial assistance and discounted billing programs in partnership with utility providers to ensure that the most vulnerable are not disproportionately impacted by the state's clean energy transition. And that was based on a comment from PSC specifically. And then 10.10, so a lot of, a lot of the big changes or new policies are in the utilities because a lot of them came either out of that Climate Action Plan or out of Puget Sound Energy's comments. So coordinate with partners, including utility providers, on timely expansion, maintenance, operation, and replacement of utility infrastructure to accommodate anticipated city growth. 11 talks about devoting resources to encourage the Washington State Energy Code with the transition to the new building code, which, as we've talked about, that's already happening. So we just need to continue doing what we're doing there. But that was in the Climate Action Plan. And then practice vegetation management, and this is to help protect those utility And then we've got a few, or another one from the Climate Action Plan, devote resources to encourage and incentivize and expand residential and commercial access to energy-efficient and climate-adaptive technologies. So things like heat pumps, solar projects, weatherization strategies, and the like. And then partner with utility providers to promote local investment and customer enrollment in clean energy programs and projects. And that's from PSC. And then we've got a couple more from Puget Sound Energy. A lot of these are all kind of focused on that transition to clean energy in an equitable way. So promote and support programs designed to decrease utility demand during peak times and evaluate the potential... and evaluate the potential for renewable, recoverable, natural gas in existing systems. And that one's from PSC. I don't know what the city would necessarily do on that one, but, so, I kind of felt like we could go either way on if we wanted to include it or not. This slide, I think, got here accidentally from my last presentation. Okay. And then we've got a couple, three more from Puget Sound Energy. So there are things like promote local investment and customers enrollment in clean energy. Did we just do this one? Yeah, sorry. And then reducing the waste stream, which there's some Climate Action Plan integration memos that kind of fleshed, comments that kind of fleshed this out further before it was just like one line. And so now we've got a lot more in there about what specifically that means and what options there are to try to actually reach that goal. So the goal hasn't changed, but the policies under it have. Okay, that's all I had for you on this one, so if anybody has comments you want to bring up, we're happy to hear them.
Mr. Mazza.
A question slash comment. Was there any desire from the city or from PSC to diversify the energy portfolio, meaning the sources of our, where we get our energy?
I think there's state requirements around that, and I know PSC is working towards those, so, and I think, I don't remember, so don't quote me on this, but I think PSC is, are working towards those, I think, is running into some challenges to make the timelines on it, but, but there are state mandated requirements that all the utilities here in the state of Washington have to comply with on, on the green energies and converting over.
Got it. But from the city perspective, do we have any goals or desires to diversify? Meaning, for example, having places within the city that can generate electricity? So, I don't know, putting solar panels on city buildings, so on and so forth? And then in addition to that, was there ever any discussion around using power banks to kind of reduce that peak demand that we sometimes get?
So, I mean, I think you're starting to get into a little bit specific technical stuff, and you can kind of go crazy if you get too much into there, but in terms of, you know, power generation, our zoning code has certain allowances, but not necessarily everywhere. I mean, if people want to put solar power on their houses, that's just considered part of the residential use, so there's no, there's no conflict there. But if you're talking about like a power generation plant type of setup, our zoning really doesn't necessarily support a lot of that. I'd have to go back in to look at specific pieces on it, but I know in general, just from remembering the updates, we don't necessarily support a whole lot of like new power plants and stuff being built here within the city itself. Our zoning doesn't necessarily support that.
And we do have a policy. It's 2.6, that is to build a program and devote resources to achieve carbon neutrality for city facilities, operations, and services. And so I, I think you're aware, but we did put solar panels on City Hall's roof a couple years ago, maybe just last year. And so there is a goal and a policy to keep working towards that on city facilities and operations because we've also started buying electric cars when possible to serve needs, so the city is working towards that.
So I think that's a good goal, but I would suggest also including some words around diversifying the energy portfolio so that we're not just dependent on like a single source for everything, especially for critical systems.
What we could take a look is, as I mentioned, I know there's already state requirements on that, so we could take a look at that and probably like a policy or something that supports, you know, those state laws and stuff that are actually promoting that.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Young.
Does some of that kind of fit under the CFU 11.7 where it talks about encourage, incentivize all these different more energy-efficient areas?
Yeah, I believe it does as well.
I kind of read it into that without hearing diversification, but it looks like there is an encouragement of those kinds of things.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for us, Amanda, on that one? All right.
Not on this, I should say. I've got another one.
Oh, okay.
Oh, on the next item, sorry.
On the next one, okay. Any further questions on this item? All right. Next is a discussion on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review on Natural Environment Element. Here we go.
Sorry, I need to stop sharing that screen and do this again. Okay. So this one's talking specifically about the natural environment element, which, if you recall, or those of you who are on the commission recall, we looked at the goals and policies on April 24th at your regular meeting, and then we looked at a draft of the full element back on May 22nd. And there were comments incorporated on those goals and policies from the commission. And so that was all done a few months ago, so we're not going to go through everything in detail. But the reason it's coming back to you tonight is because part of the Growth Management Act requires cities and local jurisdictions to reach out to and collaborate with local tribes. And so to fulfill this requirement, in the summer of 2023, staff sent out letters to all of the local tribes that were identified by the state as having an interest in the Woodinville area and inviting them to be part of the comprehensive plan in whatever way they wanted to. Only one tribe responded, and that was the Snoqualmie tribe. And so we've been communicating with them as we've had drafts of different elements and a draft of the Critical Areas Ordinance, because they said specifically they were interested in tree preservation, critical areas, you know, those type, modified trees. And so we've been making sure to keep them up to date when we've had updates on those. And the letter we received is in your packet, but they provided us with a letter that has a variety of recommended changes, some of which we think are really good, and then some of which I think either are, don't really apply to Woodinville, or we're not really sure how they fit into the comprehensive plan. But the changes for this element that staff is recommending in response to that letter is a new bullet under Challenges and Opportunities on page eight that says, "To coordinate and consult with local tribes to ensure inclusion and protection of cultural resources." A new policy under 4.7, "coordinate with local tribes to protect mature forested areas and critical cultural resources when feasible." And we've talked about looking at a way to further define what that means in our Critical Areas Ordinance, because when they say critical cultural resources, they are specifically talking about culturally modified trees. And I included a handout that they provided us that's got a link to a YouTube video, or I think it's YouTube video, kind of explaining more about what those are, but basically they're trees that were historically modified by tribes to either mark a place or mark a trail. Were you going to add something to that, Robert? I honestly am not 100% clear how staff or even homeowners would be able to identify these, which is part of the reason we need to work with the tribes more to figure that out.
Yeah, the tribe has indicated, Elizabeth Walker, who's actually worked with Woodinville in the past on, on tree regulations and stuff, and was, I think, at one point even in Arbor's force for many years and stuff. She's working with the tribes now, and they're working on providing some additional guidance that we'll take a look at whenever they are able to release that. They're still working on it internally, but whenever they're able to release that, so that we can kind of have an idea of what we're talking about, because it is kind of hard to know exactly. A lot of trees get modified, but not every tree that's been modified is necessarily a culturally modified tree. So they're going to be providing us some guidance and stuff, and we'll take a look at that and have a thought that if we can incorporate that into some of our provisions, we'll try to do so.
Mr. Mazza.
I like these suggestions. I would also add, if we can have a definition, to make it more clear what a culturally modified, or, sorry, what a cultural resource is in general, and then specifically what the Snoqualmie tribe identifies as critical cultural resources, if they have a list or something.
Yeah, I don't think it's by the tribe specifically. I think it's in general, the tribes kind of have what they identify, and each tribe has, you know, the overall, I think, definitions of that probably work, but then each tribe has its own unique traditions and stuff that may be a little bit more specific to that. We're not going to necessarily know that and put that into our codes, and tribes generally don't support us doing things like that, but what they want us to do is coordinate with them on that. And so having provisions about coordination and making sure they're aware, notifying them of things, those are the things that we can do to work with them to make sure that these things happen.
Got it, because one example that I can think of is in Hawaii, for example, certain volcanoes, mountains have cultural significance to the local people, and it's very well-known. I assume there are similar things in our regions, certain trees or certain areas that have cultural significance that can be identified. So if we can have those things identified, that would be great, but otherwise, I guess, working with the tribes is the next best thing.
Like I said, generally, they don't want us putting things like that. I mean, they want general policies and goals around it, but they don't want us specifically identifying because people then might trample on them or damage them or whatever may happen on those things. So, so generally, they'll give us the information and coordination and stuff so we can put some stuff around that to support it, but we, we won't be, they don't generally want us putting specifics in.
Got it, thank you. Commissioner Mick.
I just wanted to clarify the reference to local tribes, and you mentioned on the previous slide, just one responded. Do we have a predefined list? And this list is finite on the tribes, or it could be dynamically changed in the future? Because in the proposed language, they say local tribes.
Yeah, I mean, because generally, we're not going to work with tribes that are like, for example, in Arizona and stuff, because they're, they're too far from us to really be coordinating with. But there is a list that's put together, and we, there's, generally, we've had two tribes that have been pretty active here. The Muckleshoot tends to be very active, particularly on project permitting because of the lakes and with the river going through here. And then Snoqualmie Tribe has become a lot more active, particularly in this process. So, but there are others that are listed on that. Like I said, we did, we did contact them, all of the tribes that might have influence in this area, and only the Snoqualmie was the one on the comp plan, but we do also try to contact the other tribes on other things and stuff, too, when, when feasible. And particularly like when we're dealing with SEPA, we have several other tribes that we send notifications out on projects to.
I believe that the, I mean, the state put together the list of tribes that we needed to.
Working with the tribes, they put that list.
Yeah, and they, they put that list together, working with tribes, so certainly it could change in the future, which is part of the reason I'm not just listing specific tribes or we're not doing that in the comprehensive plan, but for right now, it's the tribes who have said they're interested.
Understood, thank you.
Vice Chair Yarbov.
This may be more detailed than is appropriate here for the comprehensive plan, but one of the things we want to do is protect the environment perhaps from very invasive weeds and things. And one of the things I have observed around the city is Japanese knotweeds taking over various areas. It's a very pernicious thing, and it's hard to get rid of, but I wondered, does it have a place here, someplace to help protect the sensitive environment that we have here?
Well, a lot of what we have is like promoting native plants and stuff, and then the county actually has a noxious weed program that is implemented and supported and stuff, but like whenever we have projects and stuff, I think in our regulations and stuff, they're always focused on native plants being, replacing other stuff. So I don't know if we have anything specific in the goals and policies, but in our regulations we do.
Okay, thank you.
Also, when they do a mitigation plan for an impacted critical area buffer or something like that, one of the monitoring goals that they always have has to do with invasive species and having them under a certain percentage of the plants. And so by doing that, it's not forever, but generally, it's at least five years and in some cases more, where they have to make sure to take care of the native plants, get them established, and make sure that the invasives don't take over for at least that time period.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Young.
I think I have a couple of questions. The culturally modified trees, recently in Wedgewood, there was a big upheaval in the community about a cultural, culturally modified tree. If people are lo, curious about local things that have happened around this, I don't know exactly what the tree looked like, but I know I have a young friend who camped outside of it for a couple of weeks. I'm curious a little bit or a lot about, there are a couple of things in here from the Snoqualmie tribe that suggest we add words about mature native forest remnants and forested open spaces that we didn't seem to think was relevant to Woodinville is, do we not have those things, or did we just not want to add them? Like they've got for E2 and E2.5, they have words about, or E2, E1 dot 2, and E2.2 and 2.3, they talk about native vegetation, but also should be adding native forest remnants and forested open space. Do, we didn't seem to think those words applied to us. Is there a reason for that?
Well, a couple of things. We actually already through our, our Northwest woodland character already actually incorporated a lot of that stuff. They also had a recommendation about making them critical areas, which is, that's a no-go. That's not going to work. They're not critical areas by state definition, and they're actually natural resources. And essentially, then you're telling, you're trying to shut down large parts of the city potentially to development, or you're going to have this vagueness, what is actually forest because we don't necessarily have commercial forest lands in here. So it, we've already got a lot of the concepts are already built into the codes, but getting into some of the specific requests they had isn't going to work in terms of implementation because it doesn't actually make sense or work in the way that they've presented it. But Woodinville does have forest protection and woods and all that. It's all built in to a lot of our character and everything else that we have in other parts of the comp plan that we talk about.
Okay. And then their E2.5 recommendation seems to align with what Steve brought up about including wildfire risk and proper management of that risk. So I just wanted to bring that up. That seems to align with your concern about wildfire management. Okay, good, yeah.
Commissioner Mazza.
Do any of the policies here include any words that pertain to the local fauna and protecting that?
The local what?
Like the local animals, fauna?
I know we don't use that word, but I don't know what it has on that.
Do you mean in, I believe that the goals and policies existing, but do, but I don't think that the tribal letter had any comments about that specifically, but some of the goals and policies already in there do talk about things like wildlife and endangered species.
And then we also have Critical Areas Regulations about, you know, with the habitat and stuff like that, that also has provisions about protected species that we've also have regulations around that get actually pulled into our Critical Areas Regulations.
Got it. Just asking because I saw verbiage around native vegetation, but I don't think I saw anything around like native animals. I do see wildlife, but that can include anything, because there's this one program that's happening right now specifically in Washington where they're trying to protect the spotted, the Pacific Northwest spotted owl, which is getting overtaken by, by the barred owl. That's why I brought it up, like, do we care about those type of things? I don't know.
Yes, we have Critical Areas Regulations that actually go into those things, so yes, we do. we do. So in fact, we actually had an owl thing here maybe about a year ago with a project. So we ended up learning a lot about this, both the spotted owl and the barrel owl. And I saw the recent news and stuff on that. But no, the animals that are listed as either endangered or forgetting the next, the other category. But anyway, we do have regulations around protecting those habitats for those. And in fact, when we get back to talking to critical areas regulations with you, you're going to find out that a lot of the new rules that are coming into effect with new buffers and stuff like that are all surrounding the, the biggest parts of the endangered animals or species around here, which happen to be dealing with the fish, right, and the water bodies that play a big role in those habitats and stuff. So yeah, there's a lot of stuff around that and a lot of regulations around that that we have currently and we're going to be updating as well for best available science.
Got it. Thank you. Okay. No other questions, I guess, at this time? Do you have anything else on that?
Nope. I was just going to basically talk about what we already talked about, which is we are going to try to figure out if there's any way to incorporate these cultural, critical cultural resources into our critical areas code update. So that is all I have for you tonight.
All right. We will move on to discussion item number four, comprehensive plan periodic review, the housing element.
All right. Let me go ahead and bring this presentation up. This is, this is a big piece of our comp plan. And particularly because we've talked about this already, a lot of the things going on with both middle housing as well as with planning for housing at different incomes and stuff. And so this housing element kind of starts bringing all of these things together. I believe we had a previous meeting where we went through a lot of the goals and policies. And so I'm not going to go through the entire document, but I wanted to just highlight some big pieces from this. But as you have questions and stuff, again, always welcome to bring those up. If there's things that you got curiosities about that we've put into this plan or other comments and stuff to add to that, please feel free to bring those up. But we'll start out really quick. These are all things that are in the current plan. And there's also a couple of new ones that I'll, I'll indicate to you that we've added since the packet went out to you. Cause one of the things we had to do with this housing element is submit it to King County for review, to the King County Affordable Committee for review. And they had a checklist of things that we had to make sure we incorporated into our housing plan to make sure that they were consistent with the King County countywide planning policies and stuff. And so as I was going through that checklist, getting ready to submit this, we did identify a couple of things. And so I'll, I'll highlight those for you that have been added in to the document. But anyways, this is the first thing just to note real quick for you is that, you know, the population, I know it's kind of hard to see up there, but again, it's in your packet, that what we're projecting between the low and high ends by 2044, that we need to be planning population wise, which is between the 17 and almost 20,000 people in the next 20 years. This next one, this is just actually, we have a bunch of data and information about the housing stock. What I wanted to mostly note for you, so we used in the chapter itself, we show the change over time in the last 10 years between 2010 and 2010, how housing stock has increased. I just wanted to note for you though, the number actually, we've had some big leaps in the last couple of years because as most of you have seen, there's been a lot of housing projects that have gone on down here in the central business district in this downtown area. And so our current actual total number of housing units, according to OFM, is at 6,420. It, it's not specifically identified in there because the numbers are always changing, new housing being built and we needed to select a timeline. But I just wanted to kind of indicate that to you and let you be aware of that condition as well as the data we have on occupancies and vacancies. And one of the things that's important to note on that, from the table that's in your plans and showing up here is that we're actually showing the vacancy rates in the city getting less and less, which is one of the contributing factors. It's not just us, it's happening in King County in general. And it's one of the contributing factors to, you know, increase prices on homes as the, you know, as the market kind of, the demands end up often exceeding the supplies out there. This next slide I wanted to show you.
I have a question from Commissioner Mazza.
Sure.
Sorry, just a clarifying question. The vacancy numbers, is that measuring for rental units or does that include ones that you can own?
It's, it's both actually. You, I, if I recall correctly, let me make sure I'm reading this correctly. Oh, this one I think may just be the totals. We have another one that broke, breaks things down by, I believe occupants by rental and also by ownership. There's another one that has the breakdown by that as well. I believe this one I just showed you up here though, I think is actually the totals it looks like. Cause it, I don't believe this actually, it just shows you 2010 and 2020. But there is another one in there that I believe also does break it down by the rentals versus ownership.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Excuse me, Robert. I have a quick question, follow-up on the vacancy question. What is a normal vacancy level? We see that in 2010, it was about 5.1% and in 2020, it's down a percent to 4.1%. What's a sort of normal expected vacancy rate?
Yeah, I'm not sure what normal necessarily, but what they consider a healthy, if, and I'm going off of memory here because this is in our housing action plan. I believe a healthy vacancy rate, because you do want to have some vacancy because there's just natural, normal turnover. And I think it's like around 5%, 5% or 6% is considered healthy. If, I may be off by a percentage point on that, but it's right around in that range. Four, five, 6% is considered healthy.
So we're sort of at the lower range in 2020 of quote healthy then?
Yeah. And I believe in the housing action plan, I think the vacancy rates got even tighter even than that. I'm not sure whether they quite are today, but they, because they do vary from year to year. But the main theme on this is, is that basically there's not enough housing for the demand out there, which I think everybody kind of knows intuitively, but there's actually evidence that empirical evidence that backs that up as well.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment on that question. I just looked it up and according to Google says a vacancy rate of between 5 to 10% is considered healthy in the state of Washington.
Thanks for the clarification.
Okay. This next slide just shows you the breakdown of housing in the city. I think probably not surprising, most of us probably aren't surprised that in the central business district, that is actually where the vast, where the majority of our housing. But what, at least for me, what was interesting in looking at this is how much our R6 zone actually makes up a lot of the rest of our housing. But this kind of gives you then a breakdown of the housing units by, by zones. And in some cases, I think some of our zones like the GB, it does indicate there's condominiums, but those probably predated before the properties got zoned industrial or I'm not sure where those, those exactly come from, because I'm not sure where those units might be. But anyway, this gives you kind of a rough idea that basically our R6 zoning and our CBD zoning are our main zones where we have the majority of our housing units in the city. Any questions on this?
A quick one.
Commissioner Young.
I'm just curious, where are, where our R6 zones are? Is that?
Yeah, I'd have to bring it up on the map, but you haven't.
It's, it's not super important if you don't have, I was just curious off the top of my head, I couldn't think about where an R6.
A lot of, oh, it looks like maybe the chair is coming in with the map, but a lot of the neighborhoods up by the high school are zoned R6 and then a lot of the neighborhoods like Ventara and down.
Kirkland?
Yeah, over by Kirkland are also zoned R6.
Wellington Heights too.
Yeah, Wellington. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Just a curiosity. Thanks.
Yeah. And again, I think most of you are probably also aware that a lot of like our residential zones were all developed under the county. And so, I mean, the CBD has more been specifically, you know, at Woodinville, although again, there was a lot of housing that predates even Woodinville's incorporation. But that's been our focus, has been our downtown areas where we have focused most of our future housing growth. And we've been kind of successful at that. And this chart kind of shows you that.
Just curious, in the condominiums in the CBD, other than Le Chardonnay, where are the other condominiums in the CBD? Cause we have 72 units. I'm just curious where the, where those other 13 units are.
I don't know the developments and stuff, but I know like, I know that there is some other areas up over in your direction where you live, out back behind up in that area. I believe there may be some condominiums and apartments.
Okay.
Do you know exactly any of the stuff up in that area?
Is Timber Ridge or Timberwood?
Timber Ridge is R24 and there's, there's like.
That, that one comes to mind and there's, yeah, we'd have to look.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. And I mean, there's a data source where this comes from apartments and condominiums are often actually more like, well, condominium and apartments are types of ownerships as I often emphasize for folks and it's more like multifamily. But this is how the data was presented by King County's apartments and condominiums. So it's however, the county has actually recorded this stuff. All right. Oh yeah. Here's the slide we were talking about earlier, about the owner-renter breakdown. That was also in their 3-14, showing you Woodinville in comparison to King County in terms of, let's see, make sure I'm thinking that right. Yeah. Well, this isn't actually vacancies. This is the owner. So sorry about that, confusing some things here. This is showing you the breakdown about in terms of housing units in Woodinville, how many of them are actually owned by somebody either has condominiums or is fee simple. And then how many of the units are being rented. And one of the things to note in here is again, you can kind of see particularly as our CBD zone has been developing, because a lot of those units have been apartments. You can see that the, a number of rentals has been increasing, which isn't just unique to Woodinville. King County as a whole has been true and even to a certain extent, Washington state, as well as I think a lot of us, everybody's familiar with, the ability to buy homes is becoming more and more of a challenge as, for a whole variety of reasons and stuff. And again, here's some of the data. And again, this only goes to 2020. I imagine that if we probably even looked at today, those numbers are probably even, probably even more renters even today than probably in 2020. Cause a lot of our apartment units actually came online after this, after 2020. A lot of the CBD stuff came online after this. This next one, this is some good information because one of the things this housing element does quite a bit of, and it's both a good thing to do, both because state prompted and the county, but it's also just good information to know too. And that is actually starting to break things down and understanding how like zoning and other things might actually impact different groups, including, you know, by race and ethnicity, how they may be impacted, which a lot of times goes into what your cost of land and what units and stuff are. So we've got some data on this that kind of one breaks down, you know, how Woodinville has actually become a more diverse community and continues to become more diverse. But also then we have a breakdown here that shows you the ownership and rent breakdown by various races in here in Woodinville as well. So this is stuff that I, I don't think historically was necessarily reported in comp plans, but it is things that now has become things that we are now starting to do and we're starting to track a lot of that in order to, part of this is, is helping us understand how past practices with zoning have had impacts also on lots of different groups and stuff that have been, you know, sometimes left out in some of the economic benefits and housing opportunities that have been, you know, given to lots of other groups and stuff. So anyway, this kind of gives you kind of a breakdown, shows you between 2010 and 2021, the breakdown by the different groups. So I wasn't going to go into super detail on this, just any observation and questions anybody wants to make on it?
Commissioner Mazza.
Yeah, these are very good graphs. I think I've actually made some suggestions in the past that we include these type of graphs. I would also be interested in seeing historical trend, meaning what populations are we gaining, what populations are we losing to give us a more detailed view of what's happening in the city of Woodinville. So, thank you.
And we have a question from Commissioner, and I'll, I'll work on your last name, but for now you're Commissioner Mick.
I'm all good. Thank you. I actually wanted to ask a very similar question. I think the data you presented is very useful, but I think you have two data points now. You have this chart showing difference within the race and ethnicity. And then you have the, at the table showing the population percentage as of now. And I think we cannot get from this data, what was dynamic. For example, I will just take, for example, Asian population. Is it changing? Is it increasing? Is it decreasing? I think you mentioned the diversity in Woodinville is increasing. Do you have any data to just support that?
I believe the table, I'd have to go back in, but I believe the housing table actually does have information that shows, I know our housing action plan definitely has that information that shows that Woodinville has become more diverse. I mean, we're still predominantly, it's still predominantly a white community, but the data on it, or the housing action plan in particular, and I don't recall if we had how much of that was pulled into this, but definitely shows that we have become more diverse in recent times. So we do have data actually that does show that, yes.
That would be helpful to see. Thank you.
Just making a note. Okay. All right. So this, this was, this is new information that I don't think we've had in our housing action. We've, we've been able to present before, but this was actually now it's starting to take a look at a breakdown by race and income here within Woodinville. And then shows you where, you can see where the lowest income groups tend to be. And anyway, so I'll kind of stop there. And again, any, see if there's any questions, observations or comments after this. Okay. And so now this next slide, this is actually one of the new ones. This is where we're starting to try to take a look because this is getting into some of the analysis as we look at the groups that have been disadvantaged. And so part of in evaluating that is looking at cost burden, which is a big piece of this puzzle about trying to find affordable housing for all the varieties of income levels in here. So we start to break this down into using the definition of what's considered cost burden. And so this comes from the feds. This is not a local, it's a federal definition, states incorporated, the GMA is incorporated. So this is the same definition that we use where basically we start considering your cost burden when 30% of your monthly income or more is being paid towards housing costs such as rent, utilities. And then you have severely cost burden that is when you're getting to this 50% and more. And you can see from the, the breakdown in here that particularly with renters, but Woodinville actually, despite its reputation of being a fairly affluent community, does actually have a large part of its population that is cost burdened in terms of, because of the price of housing here versus what their incomes are in being able to afford housing here in the city. So these are some key data points to help drive policy directions and some of the things that is leading to some of the requirements the state has is going on, as well as some of the new zoning proposals like the East Realm Mixed Use that we've talked about as we're trying to produce more housing that can help reduce some of the cost burdens for people in the lower income categories. But anyway, I think this is a really, this is kind of, this is a new thing. It's not in your current packet, but this was one of the things that we ended up adding in there as we were kind of going through the checklist for what King County wanted us to be showing on this.
Commissioner Lang has a question.
Yeah, I've heard this question. So thank you. I look at this chart, I noticed that the rental households tend to be, you know, more percentage of how, you know, cost burdened. You have like 21% severely cost burdened, 130%, cost burdened, right? So look at the chart, if you don't contrast, you can see that the ownership household, the owner households are generally less, you know, cost burdened. I just wonder, I mean, what kind of conclusions we can draw from this chart, right? Because I don't want to say, well, I don't want to draw the wrong conclusions. But, but for one thing on top, just to pop out of my mind is that's a, well, it seems that it'll be beneficial for us to make a policy to drive more ownership opportunities. So we can make our overall households, you know, those cost burdened percentages drive down, drive lower. Would that be something that actually... down, drop lower, would that be something that actually is, sounds reasonable?
Well, I think homeownership is kind of a general goal, just as a general policy, but keep in mind that you, and the data supports that a lot of the rental households tend to be lower income folks, usually to own your own house, um, for a lot of people, that, you know, we want to try to drive that, but if you're going to be able to drive that, you're also going to have to figure out a way to reduce the cost so that people can actually afford to buy and own their own homes too, there's, that's one of the big struggles that we have in here, um, but in terms of general data, people that tend to have lower incomes usually can't afford to buy, so that's one of the reasons why you see these higher numbers in the renter, um, households.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Lang?
Uh, I'm not sure that totally answered, probably we probably needed more detailed data to answer the question fully, but thank you, Robert, for the clarification, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to take a look, the Housing Action Plan does break a lot of this down in more detail, um, the, the housing needs, and there's a breakdown about rentals and what the rental rates here in Woodinville are versus the, um, cost of owner, of ownership and stuff, so we do have breakdowns of that kind of data, um, just take a look at the Housing Action Plan, you can kind of dive into that a little bit more.
Commissioner Mesa, and then Commissioner Young.
Oh, thank you, so, I wanted to add to Commissioner Lang, uh, just said, um, I, I do like this graph, but I do think it's missing some additional information, um, it's difficult to tell, uh, why, um, we see more renters as house burdened than household, uh, than owners, um, what I would like to see is a graph that shows over time, is the house burden, uh, numbers, how is it changing, so for example, for owners, ten years ago, was that number less, was that number more, was it the same, because one of the things about homeownership is that you usually, um, are in that situation for a longer, for that housing situation for a longer period of time, right, so you got a mortgage that's usually for thirty years, you probably stay in it five years, I don't know what the average is, but usually you stay in it longer than you do in a rental place, so, if we can have those, um, timelines to see, you know, year over year, how is it changing, like, is the, uh, ownership, uh, numbers getting more burdensome, are the rental, uh, uh, burden, uh, numbers getting more burdensome, or are they getting better, that would give us a better indication of whether we're doing something correct with our policies, or whether we need to change something.
Well, I, I mean, there has been a lot of that analysis done, and Woodinville's not an exception on this, and the data actually does show that past policies have led to the struggles that we're seeing here with more cost burden, um, and it's also the evidence supports that basically, um, particularly minority groups have been left behind on a lot of that, so, you know, keep in mind, the comp plan is not intended to be this entire data document that has all these details and things, it's generally going to give you snapshots of things, we do dive, like I said, the Housing Action Plan does start to dive into more details on a lot of stuff, and those, so we do have other documents that support that, and then there is national data, state data, and things that you can actually dive into these things as well, for the comp plan though, we're not trying to get into the super details, because otherwise that book's going to be too big, and it's going to be too much for people to try to get the general information out of it, so we try to catch snapshots and ha, and highlights of the information and stuff that you'll see in here then, and then the goals and policies then go along with that as well.
Those numbers don't surprise me at all, because when you buy a house, they tell you to buy the most house you can afford, and your mortgage payment is fixed at that, your property taxes are going to fluctuate, but in a rental situation, you go in and every year, you're going to see that housing cost go in, so when you originally go in, you may not be cost burdened, but as you go along, so to Commissioner Mesa's point, I think, it's interesting, it'd be interesting to be able to see, and not necessarily in the comp plan, but just if you're able to pull that data and share it with us, of, okay, the people that are twenty-one percent cost burdened, how long have they been in their current residence, you know, I think that, that would tell you a lot, but yeah, um, doesn't surprise me a bit that those are the numbers, because they, they track pretty much along with the percentage of, of homeownership and that, and, and people that are cost burdened, they're not going to be able to get into that single-family house, um, you know.
Right, and I think the most important point though, that every, that we want to be taken from this, is that we're, we're seeing the cost burden though increase, I mean, that's the most important piece here, is that the cost burden, and it's not, again, unique to Woodinville, it's across King County, across the state, across the country, we are seeing an increase in that, and they're starting to dig into as to why has this been happening, and you, obviously, you can go into all kinds of reasons and stuff, but we know zoning has also played a role in that as well.
Well, and also the, that it's a low vacancy, um, rate, because we, we know that we have a severe shortage of, of housing, not only in Woodinville, in King County, in Washington State, but throughout the country, we, we, we hear that talked about all the time, and so that's going to be directly, a, a direct correlation to what rental rates are, and, you know, yeah, they're going to raise them, raise them some more until, you know, they get the vacancy report, if, if the vacancy gets to ten percent, then rents are going to come down, so.
Right, and then, of course, the other part of that is wages, where have wages gone in relation to the housing costs, because that's, that's, if wages keep up with the increase in housing, then you're not necessarily increasing the burden, but if wages are falling further behind, uh, in comparison to the cost of, how much housing is going up, then the cost burden does increase, and that, that, that has actually been the trends that we see generally, is that wages haven't kept up with the cost of housing.
Commissioner Mesa, you got something else?
Yeah, just, oh, one more comment, um, I was recently reading some research around possible causes, uh, for housing, uh, becoming so expensive, and the, uh, burden numbers going up, and one of the things that, um, I learned is that, over the past few years, there have been, uh, consolidation in the number of builders, uh, of developers that are providing to our housing stock, which basically reduces demand, and then they can, um, charge whatever they want, basically, so it'd be interesting to see some graphs around, uh, the number of developers that we have in our areas, um, that are contributing to the housing stock, and how that is changing over time, to see if it also correlates with, uh, the prices going up and the, uh, burden numbers going up.
Yeah, I agree, that'd be interesting information, it's too much for the comp plan, but it is interesting information, yes, I agree.
But, in, in that sense, it might be helpful from a policy perspective, to do something to promote more, uh, builders, uh, I don't know how we would do that, but basically to increase, um, competition amongst builders and developers, thank you.
Commissioner Young?
I'm going to try to connect some dots.
Okay.
Looking at page one twenty-one and seeing the, how the rate of median household income has stayed pretty stable, and then how the housing cost has gone up, and I want to recognize a couple things, what, what Ahmed said earlier about being in an R eight and only being able to put in an R four, um, or put in four buildings on that R eight, what I'm seeing in Wellington is these behemoth multimillion dollar mansions going in when we tear down a bunch of trees, so you're not seeing smaller affordable homes, you're seeing giant homes, um, and, and in my last round in Planning Commission, I remember a lot of developers coming in, I specifically remember Heritage, the Heritage, the winery down there, coming in and talking to us about if he got more, uh, if he had the opportunity to pour, put more units in, he would be encouraged to make sure there was a more affordable housing, I don't know that he followed through on that, I think they were words to encourage us to give him R twelve, R twenty-eight, instead of what he was given to start with, but I'm curious how we look at these graphs, and we, we really think about how we encourage growth that is more affordable, and how we hold developers accountable for things that they say like that, 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 that they don't really follow through on.
Yeah, so, you're actually touching on one of the big changes that's happening, because, um, uh, I don't know if you've been following, but Planning Commission, we've been talking about this for the last couple of years, the middle housing.
Yeah.
And so that's the whole thing behind the middle housing, and the mandatory requirements now, for example, you can't, in Woodinville, in other jurisdictions, it's higher than this, but in Woodinville, we have to always allow a minimum of, of two units per lot, and it doesn't matter the size of the lot, so, um, so density no longer plays a role, it is now based on lot sizes and number of units, and then there's also this mandatory that we have to, um, provide for a certain number of, um, um, styles of housing, so, like the cottage housing, duplexes, stacked housing, things like that, this is all part of the middle housing, and part of the goal on this has been, um, to try to promote additional units, now, the middle housing does have provision, so you can try to keep the, you know, the, the form and shape of those single-family neighborhoods by requiring these buildings, these new homes that may have two or three units in them, to still look like a single-family house, so you can kind of preserve the character and the nature of the, of the, of the, of the neighborhood that's been built over years, but to the point you're trying to make about, yeah, trying to get more units, that is actually fundamentally what is at the heart of why these new mandatory requirements for middle housing, and why we are now required to start making changes in our zoning, particularly in our single-family zoning, to allow higher densities to be able to be built in them, because there is a correlation, and I can tell you from my Medina experience, that, you know, the property in Medina, which everybody knows is kind of the Gold Coast here, right, um, houses there start around three or four million dollars and up, you buy a piece of property there, the land, starting with the land by itself is going to be three or four million bucks, you're not going to build a thousand square foot house on a three or four million dollar piece of property, it doesn't correlate what the value of that house is with the cost of the land and stuff, so, the land values, when you have land more expensive, it does promote bigger houses to go along, to help kind of stabilize out what the cost of that land is, particularly if you're using loans and stuff, banks are not going to loan to you unless that property has a house on it that is big enough to justify the cost of what you're paying for both the land and the house, so, we've got these, we've got some of these trends where we're making land, if it's getting really super expensive, which bigger lots tend to be, that does contribute to this, um, this creation of more larger houses, middle housing's coming in there, saying that you can keep those shape and forms, but then trying to create incentives so that we're dividing those, instead of gigantic six thousand square foot houses, maybe it's two, three thousand square foot houses, or maybe it's four, fifteen hundred square foot houses, or whatever it might be. So, yeah, great, great point, and again, it goes into the heart of some of the new rules and stuff going on.
Vice Chair Yabroff.
Just as a comment, one of the things my wife has, has observed, is two things going on in housing stock in this country, one, we have Airbnbs which are taking residences off the market, and they're high-priced rentals, the other is an increase in corporations, typically real estate investment trusts, which are buying apartments, houses, and so forth, and so you're seeing a greater concentration of ownership in these corporations, and the building then to start to have more impact and or control of the market, these are all things which I think are helping to drive prices up for ownership or rentals of houses.
Yeah, I mean, here in Woodinville, the Airbnb hasn't been a factor, we've actually looked at how, the number of Airbnb units, and it's pretty, it's pretty minuscule for Woodinville, doesn't mean it couldn't change in the future, um, and there are definitely communities though, that are high tourism, that have been mi, big impacts on it, and they usually try to adopt rules and stuff around it, in the case of Woodinville, I don't know about the corporate piece of it, but I do know in the case of the Airbnb, we did take a look at that, um, and at least in Woodinville, Airbnb still is a very, very tiny amount of housing units here.
Yeah, I, I think Woodinville may be behind the curve on some of these things, with respect to the corporate housing, again, may be behind, but this is something, in terms of a national trend, we're starting to see corporations having a greater impact, and, um, we may get into a situation where antitrust laws may come to play at some point.
One of the things that Robert touched on it, is that drives the cost, the housing costs, is the cost of land, the cost of the dirt, it'd be interesting to see how we compare for a piece of dirt versus Bockel, or Redmond, or even looking at Duval or something, so if that's something you guys could pull together, I think it'd be interesting to look at that.
Yeah, I mean, that wouldn't be too hard, because just like we have a breakdown and some of that information on us, the others do too, if we get a chance, um, we might be, we could try to put something like that together, if you want to take a look at it.
Yeah, and not necessarily part of this, just a future discussion would be interesting to see that.
Yeah, because it, it is, um, because it is interesting to make those comparisons, like, you know, both where income levels are by communities, also where land rents, things like that, and most jurisdictions, just like we've put together, they've put that together for them as well, so, yeah, good stuff.
Okay, what else you got for us?
Um, a couple more slides, um, this was also a new slide in there, this is actually then breaking it down by race, um, about the cost burden, and what I thought was interesting here was, you can see, which, to kind of go back to one of the earlier slides, um, Hispanic and Latino populations in here, um, are also, I believe, we're at our lowest income, at medium income, yeah, medium income, um, also applied to them, and as you can see here, uh, these are our greatest cost burdened, um, here in the community. These next couple of slides, you guys have seen a lot of this already before, this is just showing you the breakdown when we got into the reason why we have the, um, new proposal for the East Realm Mixed Use Zone, um, these new target numbers, we have the original housing target number total, which was two thousand thirty-three, that we had to plan for through twenty forty-four, but then we had this new additional requirement that came into play, um, in the last couple of years, where we have to then also account for housing types that can support peo, um, in these need areas, where Woodinville has a very high need in the low income, um, and then you can see the moderate and high, and so we have to be able to enable zoning to have capacity for the housing types that generally can support, um, uh, households in these different, um, income groups, so, we've had quite a bit of conversation on that, unless there's any questions, um, this is just a slide that kind of pulls it together, and actually adds on top of that the existing stock of housing, and where the existing stock of housing falls into these income brackets as well.
Commissioner Mesa?
Uh, just curious, uh, where is our emergency housing stock located?
Um, none.
None, okay, so this should be new?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a requirement, and I've actually, there's a slide that talks a little bit more, I'm going to show you on this, this was some, it's, it's in your packet, um, but it's new information, because we've had this emergency housing requirement, but originally Commerce wasn't requiring for us to a, account for it in our comp plans, and then they said they needed to, so this has been added like in the last month, month and a half, into the housing element, uh, but in the case of Woodinville, we do not have any existing, um, but we still have to show capacity for, and that's actually, I think that might be even the next slide, um.
And what type of housing would be considered emergency housing?
Well, this is, I mean, emergency housing can take a lot of different forms, but this is talking about emergency housing in terms of beds, so the ca, the capacity we have to analyze is for a number of beds, so like your shelters and stuff, but technically, emergency housing can be a single-family house, it can be apartment, it can be a, a wide range, um, of things can fall into the emergency housing category, uh, but in terms of the analysis that we have to do here, there actually, it's based on beds, and it comes, if I recall correctly, the methodology we have to use is kind of based on like where we allow the hotels and stuff like that, because, and where we allow shelters, um, that's where we do our analysis in terms of our capacity for meeting this specific requirement, but keep in mind that emergency housing isn't necessarily restricted, it's just type, your typical shelters and stuff, it can be other types of housing as well.
Right, thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chair Yabroff.
Looking at the enthusiasm of our commission, uh, at the time, I move that we extend the meeting till nine thirty.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion by Vice Chair Yabroff, and a second by Commissioner Young to extend the meeting to nine thirty, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? And abstained? The meeting is extended to nine thirty, sorry, Yvonne.
Okay, um, so the next slide here, this is just actually, I didn't put, the, the table in your, um, in your packet, it's got the single-family zones, I didn't put all of that on it, because it would have been just, you couldn't follow the slide, and the main thing I wanted to show you in here is basically, this is the low-income housing capacity, um, and showing with the, uh, conversion to a, a, a good part of the general business zone into this mixed use, East Realm Mixed Use Zone, we're basically able to meet our, um, low-income, um, target numbers for housing, and again, we've kind of talked about this quite a bit in the past, unless there's any questions on it, I just wanted to highlight, um, again, the reason for the EMU zoning, as, which is one of the big changes actually happening in our, in addition to the middle housing, this EMU zoning is, is, um, the other really big change happening in our, um, comp plan. All right, and then this is the emergency housing, this is just the overall table, so these zones here, the TB, EMU, uh, CBD, and TI would be the places where we allow like hotels and shelters and stuff like that, and so there was, it, it talks about it in more detail in the, in the comp, in the comp plan, there's a bit more of a discussion about what we use as the methodology and stuff, but anyway, from this you can tell we, um, we have capacity to far surpass what our, um, uh, target numbers, um, assigned to us are, so we're, we're pretty good to go in this area, um, any questions on that? All right, the last slide, I All right, the last slide I got in here, this just highlighting, because we talked about goals and policies before, and since then, going through this, kind of doing further evaluation and recommendations and stuff, have recommended adding these additional four policies. Everything else is still the same from what you saw before, but these additional four came about from comments, we've kind of doing further analysis, council's taken a look, making sure we're meeting the King County-wide planning policy requirements and stuff like that. So, kind of like previously, I wasn't going to read through all these, just see if there's any questions, any concerns about these policies being added.
Don't see any.
All right, I think that was the last one. The only thing else I wanted to note for you, unless there's any other questions, are upcoming meetings on the comp plan, because our plan is, we're going to try to have as much assembled of all the different chapters and elements for you in two weeks, so we can have a study session. We are going to be sending notice out to the entire community, all Woodinville zip codes. We'll get a mailed notice of a public hearing on October 9th. We're going to start actually early at 5:30 to have an informational session before the regular meeting starts at 7 o'clock for the hearing. So, you're welcome to be here early if you want to come to the informational thing, but we'll set some things up in here. I don't know if we're going to get a big turnout or not, but we're, we want to make sure the public has an opportunity to ask questions. Then we'll go into the hearing, you'll be able to take any testimony people want to provide. And then depending on how that kind of plays out, you might either end up closing the hearing, or you could end up continuing if we feel like we need to have additional hearings. And then we'll have discussion and deliberation on it, but I'm not going to ask you to take any action that night on it. The goal is that we'll probably look at the October 23rd. If there, if we're able to close the public hearing, that you might be able to take action that night. Of course, again, this is just a preliminary schedule, because, again, if the hearing needs to be continued, or you need additional meetings for deliberation and discussions, we want to make sure you have that opportunity. But if we don't kind of set up at least a preliminary schedule, we'll never get to where we need to go. So this is kind of the preliminary schedule, I just want you to all be aware of. And I'll note, the mayor's comment about that joint meeting is the day after, it's the next day, 24th of October. So, for those of you that do want to go to the joint meeting, it is back-to-back nights for us.
That might put us into overtime.
Yes, absolutely. We can pay, we can pay you overtime.
Robert, since you had a lot of slides that weren't in our packet, could you send us that PowerPoint?
Which one's that?
The one you just did. Will you send that to us?
Sure.
Thank you. Since there is stuff in there, or I should say. Yvonne, will you send that to us?
Yeah, Yvonne also posts the PowerPoints online, and she is quick about doing it the next day.
Okay, and that's just in the regular?
You click on the packet tomorrow when it's posted.
Okay. Good to know, thank you. Okay.
All right, anything else on this?
No, I think we're good for now.
All right.
Okay, that will take us to discussion item number five, Planning Commission bylaws.
All right, so this just kind of has come up in some conversations that had with the chair and the vice chair about remote. And kind of as we were kind of talking through some of this stuff, it was kind of realized, you know, the council has policies around how they operate. We don't actually have anything in our bylaws, and thought it might be worth having a conversation about on here. So let me go ahead and bring this presentation up. And in your packets, I have a copy of the existing bylaws, and I also have a copy of the council procedures that are adopted by resolution, which do include amongst everything else the, the remote meeting participation. So, let's see, yeah, so a couple of quick things here to note. The Planning Commission bylaws, if you're not aware, they set forth the rules and regulations on how we regulate the meeting. Since COVID ended, there has been an increase. Prior to that, I don't think we really ever rarely would have remote, because we really didn't have the technologies, and you'd have to phone call in. So, it was pretty rare, but then COVID came, and new technologies came in. But since COVID has ended, we still have continued with those technologies, making remote participation a little bit more practical. And so, but the thing is that we've noted on this is, even with this increased use, our bylaws are silent on any rules around this. And so, as I mentioned, the council has rules around this to curate consistency. So, one of the suggestions is to have a conversation around whether the Planning Commission does want to add new language in here, so that we do, so everybody knows what the rules are around that, and we can make sure that we're enforcing them and applying them in a consistent manner. So, before I get into any of these other slides, I do want to stop there and kind of just ask that general question about what is the Planning Commission's thoughts about adding additional bylaws regarding remote meeting participation?
Commissioner Mesa.
Yeah, I have a question regarding this. Do we have any language in our bylaws that say you have to be physically present at the meeting?
No, we don't have, it's completely silent on it.
Okay.
The only thing we have in there is basically absences, unexcused absences. There's rules around that, but beyond that, there, there isn't anything that says you have to physically be present.
And so I would be in favor of adding language to allow remotely participating in the meetings. I think it's for various reasons, both from an accessibility perspective. For example, if you're traveling, or if you're, I don't know, injured or not feeling well, you can still participate remotely. In those cases, I think it's perfectly fine, so I'll be in support of it. Thank you.
Commissioner Mick.
Muted.
Believe you're muted.
Excuse me, I should be good now.
Yep, now we can hear you.
You see, I've made my point. I've joined remotely, and I sense some issue. But I'm also very supportive, I think, again, I'm on traveling this week, and so that's the only way for me to be there. I will be in person next time, and the way it works is really good. I think technically, everything should be ready. The content is very clear. I see everyone who's speaking. I don't see, I don't feel any exclusion at all. I feel fully part of this meeting. I hope you feel I'm part of the meeting too, and so I'm fully in favor to make sure it's more officially documented.
Vice Chair Yabroff.
I've been a member of this commission for a long time. One of the things that, when I first volunteered and in subsequent renewals, the question is asked, can you attend a meeting? Typically, it was earlier on, it was two meetings a month. The general expectation was you would appear in person and be available on the dais, that you are also more accessible for the public if they wish to see you as a human being. In addition, in my experience over the many years, the discussions are better and more robust when we are here in person than when we see people who are remote. And for, sent normally one meeting a month, my sense is, if you cannot do that, maybe you should be considering doing something else. But we volunteer our time and our service, and the expectation has been, you will come to a meeting. It's only one meeting a month, two hours. And I think because of the quality of discussions that happen when we're here in person, I cannot support that we have regular members not coming to meetings.
Could I get a clarification? Because this is talking about being able to enable it. Are you in support of, though, having rules around the ability for remote? Or are you suggesting that we amend it so that you can't do remote? Or just leave it as it is, where it's not, where there's, there's no rules around it at all?
We had a lot of meetings that were remote because of the COVID pandemic. I think that was an exceptional circumstance. I would support the notion that you come in person. If you're ill, and you really can't come, you may not be mentally as sharp as well. And, again, I favor our being here in person, and we only allow remote with rare exception.
So you, and we'll go through those things, so, just to make sure again, clear, so you kind of support that there would be some rules around it then? But, and we'll go through what those rules are here, if the majority wants to do this.
I would say the rules should be very limited for remote.
Commissioner Young.
I, I came into this meeting thinking I was going to have a specific opinion. I agree with Steve that being in the room adds equality, but I also, I'm hearing Mick being extremely engaged, and I'm recognizing that we are in a place now where people do remote in, and that we want a diverse, a diverse community being able to attend our Planning Commission meetings. Our audience can come via, I think that our audience can also come via remote. And, and I think that, that the engagement part is more important than the being in person. I like seeing people in person. I would much rather be sitting next to Mick, seeing him talk, but I, I think that the diversity of allowing people to be remote, if they have a job that makes them travel but still care enough about Woodinville to do this volunteer position, or if they happen to be in a position where it's harder for them to come into a full room, but they still participate, I think it's important for us to offer that capacity. The expectation should be engagement more than absolute presence, although I prefer the presence.
Commissioner Krebs, you've been very quiet tonight, and I'm going to ask you to not be quiet.
Yeah. I think we've all experienced, you know, pre-COVID, COVID and the kind of the aftermath. I think the general agreement in, you know, by day job and what I'm kind of hearing here, I think you're more productive in person. I think there's more collaboration. Obviously, if you're, we're looking up and down, and we can see how people are responding to our thoughts, or, or queuing off of people's responses. I, I do think we should encourage appearance in person. I think having some rules is probably a good idea, adjusting the bylaws in a way. I think saying, saying remote is, is not available is probably not the right decision, but maybe saying, you know, we expect in-person appearance, and then maybe the chair and/or the director can authorize remote appearances if, if necessary for travel, or for health, or whatever the issue might be.
Commissioner Lang.
I don't have any strong opinions. I think definitely remote should be an option, and I should be available to, whenever needed. I definitely, you know, support having that option, and so that, you know, we can have more, you know, full participation for the Planning Commission meetings.
Thank you. I definitely think that we do need some, some rules regarding remote. I, I agree with Vice Chair Yabroff, being here in chambers is highly more productive. Having facilitated these meetings for a while, I will tell you as chair, it's much easier to do it if everybody's here. So, I would always like that to be the case. But I understand also that things come up, and you may not be able to be here all the time. I know, Vice Chair Yabroff, you've been away sometimes on a vacation and not been in a meeting, but if you chose to be able to participate remotely, I certainly would want to allow that. I think that the restrictions that the council have are pretty good. I would ask us to go one step further and maybe come up with a number, if we could, about how many meetings you're allowed to attend remotely. Because I agree with Vice Chair Yabroff, when you take on this position, you know when the meetings are, and we do have special meetings, and I think, you know, when you do that, then, yeah, I can understand not being here. The one other thing that I would like to consider being part of that is that you must have a camera. I think it's very important to be able to see the person that's speaking in there. So, those are my thoughts. Any further?
So, I've got slides here, if we want to go forward, and we'll walk through the council's rules on this thing, and we'll talk about what they have in place, and, and see where you are at on these different provisions and stuff. Because the idea then is, I'll take that input, and we'll write up this new section, because what I'm hearing is, I think there is a desire to move forward, to put some kind of rules and stuff around it. And then we'll bring that back to you at the next meeting, and can make further tweaks, whatever we need to. The requirement is that we need to have the specific language identified at least four or five days prior to the meeting, so we need to get settled on the language before you can actually vote on the changes. So today, what we can do is, if we want to move forward, is I've got these things up, and we can talk through these, and then I can draft up, based on your input on that, I can draft up the, the new section in there, and we can talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay, I'm, I'm good on that, so let's, let's get started on it.
All right. All right, so this first one is just the, and I highlighted, I tried to highlight in bold the main pieces to be aware of on here. So this is where it starts talking about your ability. First thing, and this kind of got to, I think, one of the comments heard earlier, council only is allowed to do remote twice per calendar year. So let's start with a conversation on that, whether there's an interest to do the same thing as council, allow additional, allow fewer, kind of get your input on that.
Commissioner Mesa.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of points. I think two times a year seems a little bit arbitrary, like, why two? Also, from a, from an accessibility perspective, I imagine, for example, if we had someone with mobility issues, and that might make them difficult to come in in person, not having that option would hinder such people from participating, which I think would not be a good thing to do. Also, when we interviewed for this volunteer position, there was never, I think, any explicit mention about having to attend in person. While I probably agree that that was implicit, I don't think it was ever stated as a requirement. So, I don't know, I, I don't think we should have a, a limit on, on the numbers. That would be my opinion. Thank you.
Vice Chair Yabroff.
The question was asked on the application, can you attend the meetings? The implication is that you'll be physically coming to meetings. And, you know, this is what I remember on the application, perhaps you can add some detail there.
And all of this is a matter of policy, so again, have a conversation on this. This actually has flexibility, that the majority can allow additional besides the two. But again, it's up to you, if you want to set a limit or not have a limit, that's the conversation to have, and it's, and whatever you guys want to go with is what we'll put together for you for further discussion.
Commissioner Krebs, and then Commissioner Young.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think two makes sense. We usually only have 10, I think, regular meetings, because we usually have a winter break and a summer break. So maybe two remote regular meetings, and then maybe allow for unlimited special meetings, because you can't plan for those, really.
Commissioner Young, and then we'll go to our remote participants.
And I do notice that it says twice per calendar year, unless otherwise approved by a majority vote of council. So there is some exemptions to that, too, that makes it more flexible. I'm going to bring back a memory. I want, I also want to have this rule in place, because I remember a point during my last round on, on the commission, where there was a council member that came in and very obstreperously told us all that it was expected that we would be here 100% of the meetings. And this protects us from a little bit of council retribution, or a little bit of nastiness that, that, that gives us space to go, wow, all of a sudden I have to travel for work, I can still be here and, and be present, because I want to be here, not because somebody's going to walk in and tell me I'm going to get rid of you because you didn't show up 100% of the time. So I like having the allowance. I think it's good. I'm good with it where it is.
Commissioner Lang.
Yes, I think I concur, agree with what Commissioner Mesa was saying, you know, that twice per calendar year was literally... know, the twice per calendar year was little arbitrary, right? I think, uh, uh, this probably, if we, we do want to institute a cap on this, I think we should have some more time, uh, discussing this. Cause, uh, what I heard from the council, I could be wrong. You correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, after this rule was instituted, there's some friction, you know, about, uh, attendance and such. I mean, in my humble opinion is totally unnecessary for, uh, you know, um, government entity to function in such a way. And, uh, uh, I think this could be an unintended consequence that, for the rule, but, uh, from a bystander's point of view, it was not something that, uh, as innocent as it seems. So I would definitely agree that we should, uh, be careful about this, uh, uh, calendar year, you know, uh, twice per calendar year thing, you know, put into the bylaw because it's arbitrary and, uh, it could have some unintended consequences.
Um, Commissioner Mick?
Yeah, I, I, I support the, the comment. I think the number twice a year is arbitrary and I think we need to think very carefully about putting specific. I'm trying to reflect how I've seen it works in other institutions and commercial entities. And obviously we are in this industry trend, work from home versus return to office. A lot of companies going through specifically that part during the last 12 months. And I think the, the thing I've seen quite consistently to have a cap of more than half of your time, you should be in person. So basically if there are 10 meetings, you should attend six of them in person or something like that. If we really want to put some cap, but I personally believe we should not put a cap. I think we should just make sure, I like the suggestion about video on. I think what we're actually trying to say, you need to be present, doesn't matter in person or remotely, you need to actively participate. We need to see you. We need to be able to see your emotion when you express them. So I think, I think that's how I would think about those roles versus you must be in person no matter what, because I think we will eventually limit the pool of people who may be interested to be participating in this, um, commission in the future. As we see more and more companies and institution allowing people to work from home, fully do their job from home, if that's something they prefer to do.
Commissioner Young, did you weigh in on the limit on the number?
I always weigh in. I, I, I think two is good. I'm also sitting here thinking and typing that attendance is now after COVID leaves space for interpretation. So this is when we say we, and I, I, I understand the point. I do support being in here in person, but also we signed something that said we would, we would attend, we would be able to attend meetings and that's, that's up for interpretation now and, and that so many people do attend things remotely from across the United States. So I think I still, I like twice and I also run, want to recognize that unless otherwise approved gives a whole lot of expanse of, somebody could still do 10 if there was a reason that they needed to do 10 remote. So I, I agree twice is kind of mandatory, but I don't see that three times is going to hurt anything or six times is going to really hurt anything if somebody has a reason for not being able to be attended in person.
Yeah, I think most of the time you will know ahead of time that you're going to be remote. So I think if we do put a number, I would even say make it three. Um, you're able to attend three and any additional would require the commission to approve it. So we're having this meeting now. I would assume that you would know to, know in, you know, October, now you're not going to be able to attend your work trip or whatever, if you're having a vacation. Um, you know, um, that's kind of where I'm at. So I've heard two, no limit. You, you don't want any remote.
I think there ought to be some limit. I could, I can see one maybe or two remotes. But when we apply for this, we are asked the question, can you attend? The implication as I understood it was you would attend in person. And this means that not only you attend in person, but you come prepared to discuss the issues and, um, do whatever is necessary that the commission agenda requires and demands. Um, if I take this at its ultimate conclusion, I can conceive of a situation where we have no one here because we're all remote. And that could happen. I think that would be a travesty for the public and I would be saddened to see that happen.
Okay. So my count is we have four commissioners that are willing to have a number of meetings. So I think we want to bring that back. That said, I will ask those three commissioners that said no restriction on the number of meetings, if they now would like to suggest a number since that is what will be brought back because the majority of the commission has asked out that there be a limit. Commissioner Meza?
Oh, thank you. Um, before I give my number, uh, I just want to put another scenario forth for folks to think about. Um, in the society that we live in, uh, childcare burden usually falls upon women. Having these restrictions could prevent us from having more women participate in our, um, uh, planning commission. I can see situations where even for myself, I've had to stay home because I didn't have childcare last minute. And the only way that I can participate was by remotely, uh, logging in. So for those reasons, I would say make the number 10, whatever the maximum number of, of meetings is. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Lang?
Well, I would say yes. I sort of, I agree with, uh, the generally I agree with what the Commissioner Meza was saying. And, uh, but related to what Mick mentioned earlier, you know, generally speaking, I think people are talking about going to office 50% of the time or not. I would say I'm, I'm fine with any number between what Mick suggested and also, uh, and what Commissioner Meza suggested.
Mick?
Uh, I would, yeah. So I would just say half as, as I suggested before. So at least half of the time it should be totally fine. If we have 10 as a total number, then my suggestion would be five.
Well, we, we technically have 12 meetings a year. So that would make it six.
Six, yes.
If we did 50%. Now, in reality, we don't have usually 12 meetings. We get at least one off, sometimes two. So, um, but there are 12 regularly scheduled, um, meetings. So, um, what's your number, Commissioner Krebs?
I, uh, what was the suggestion up there? Two? Yeah. I think the council rule of, of two being, uh, totally acceptable, remote is fine. And then anything within the discretion of, I guess, the committee as a whole or the commission as a whole.
Vice Chair Yabroff?
I will concur with Commissioner Krebs and say two with provision that if someone has a, a need for more, did it have to be approved by the commission?
Commissioner Young?
I would agree with the two. I think that aligns with what we've got up here already.
And I, I said three, but I will go with the two, um, just to make it clear, majority because nobody's going to go with the three. So it'd be two and with the language that additional can be provided. Um, Commissioner Meza?
Uh, just want to ask a clarifying question. Um, would we also put a procedure in place to ask for the additional, um, uh, remote, uh, meeting? Um, and also if we are at our limit, are you going to stop people from joining remotely? How would that even work?
So this gets into, um, whether something be considered a, um, excused or unexcused absence. And so, cause up with, when you have unexcused absences, um, that can add the consequences of you being removed from the planning commission, right? Um, and there's two different ways that can happen. Um, there's the stuff that's set up in the code and then the planning commission bylaws have a little bit different of a provision on it. So, um, that's the enforcement mechanism on it. Basically is essentially because you could end up, yeah, you could potentially not allow for it and then it becomes an unexcused absence.
Commissioner Krebs?
I, I just wanted to clarify. I think my, my number was two regularly scheduled meetings.
Right.
And then kind of, I guess, theoretically unlimited special meetings.
Right. So any, any special meeting you could join remotely. Um, Commissioner Lang?
Uh, I'm looking at the clock. I think probably this will take a little longer. I want to, uh, make a motion to extend a meeting.
By how long?
By, uh, 30 minutes to 10 o'clock.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lang and a second by Vice Chair Yabroff to extend the meeting by 30 minutes to 10 PM. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Nay? Abstain? All right. The meeting is extended by 30 minutes to 10 PM. Commissioner Young, your mic's on. Did you have something?
Oh, yeah. Um, I, I think we have, I assume we didn't do that today because we didn't have to excuse anybody. Previously we had a process where if somebody was going to be absent, we gave them that excused absent or whatever. We would use that same process for if somebody wanted to be remote after they'd bypassed their two allotted, right? We, we'd go through that same vote. I assume that's part of the process. It's documented in here somewhere.
Yeah. I mean, we've got more things going here when we get into the pieces about reporting and stuff like that. But yeah, the unexcused absences is actually a vote by the planning commission. So it's not an automatic unexcused unless.
So, so we're at two, we're at two and any special meeting a commissioner can join remotely.
That's my understanding.
Yep.
Okay. Are we, anything else sent up on the slide here? I mean, I think a lot of this other stuff is pretty, um, self-evident about being able to hear, um, and being able to participate. Um, and that would mean that when somebody does, actually one of the things we'll need to make a practice, they do it with the council, which is doing a, um, you need to make sure you tune in early enough so we can do a voice check with you whenever you're doing remote. Um, so in other words, don't sign on at the very start of the meeting because we can't do a check. We, you're going to need to make sure you sign in like five or 10 minutes earlier and do a, um, an audio check with us.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Mick?
I think Robert, you just covered probably a piece of that, but I think as we discuss this rules, we need to find a way to document who has been in person versus who has been remote. I don't believe there is such distinction right now as you now want to measure how many times you were joining remotely. And you, you need some register to make this count, I guess.
Yeah. Normally I always, um, and I didn't do it tonight. I always state that, you know, the, which commissioners are joining remotely. So it is part of the record.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Krebs?
Uh, I do, I think, support the idea that, uh, anyone who is remote is video. So we, you know, they can see us obviously, but that we can see them. So, uh, it allows for like, uh, video or speakerphone and telephone participation. I think video participation or.
Well, this allows either way. I mean, video, because we usually we're using Teams, but this does allow for just audio as well only.
Okay. I, I, I do like the, I think everyone would have access to appear via video with most all phones at this point.
Uh, Vice Chair Yabroff?
I guess as an observation, the council has a limit of two meetings per calendar year. They also have three meetings a month normally. So they are more, much more tightly scheduled than we are. So I guess I'm, I'm looking at this and saying, if we're serious about serving, it means you serve and you come to the meetings. This was the expectation when we applied. Um, so I guess I'm not sure I want to go ahead with two meetings per year since that's in order of 15 to 20% of the meetings, which you would be remote. Um, I understand the special meeting thing and I'm okay with that part, but the quality of discussion is so much better with people and people are here. The, no matter how good the microphones are, it's not as good as what we have when we are here and we can hear each other and we can see each other's expressions, face and so forth. So I'm, I guess I'm willing to go along with a twice per calendar year, but I'm not comfortable with it. And I think it's a mistake.
Thank you.
Can I just add one thing also to this conversation? So keep in mind, you know, when we're talking about this, um, you, you use your two remote up, you, you know, and you've got something that comes up. So you can't make the meeting. It can still be an excused absence. So you're just not even participating in the meeting at all. So, um, for those that, you know, aren't always able to make, this gives you an opportunity to participate remotely and count towards the meeting. But the other part of this is that if you're not able to make a meeting for whatever reason and you've given proper notice on it, then it's an excused absence. And so you just won't participate in the meeting. So that also still exists for all the members as well.
Commissioner Meza?
Uh, I'd like to make a comment on, on that particular point. Um, by adopting these limits, we're basically forcing people to take the absence when they might perfectly be able to participate remotely. So the question is, would you rather people not participate at all or participate remotely when they can? Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Young?
Sorry. I want to stick really sturdily to the words after the twice per calendar year, unless otherwise approved by a majority vote of the council. It is acceptable for somebody to be, to miss two for this and say, wow, I'm a, well, what I struggled with the last time I was here. I am a mom. I'm a mom whose husband is traveling. I will have to miss this meeting. I didn't plan on it. That gives me space to call in and say, I know I already missed two, but I really have to do it this way and I really want to attend. So I think it still leaves us that option to call in and say, I have an unexpected thing that I have to do, but I can still, but can I still call in? So I, I think that still leaves us leeway that we don't have to make that choice.
Thank you for those comments. Okay. Um, yeah, no, I think all of that is good. That they have. Um, I like, like Commissioner Young mentioned that, you know, it would be the commission can approve it.
Yeah, I may do a little bit more tweaking around with the language and stuff on this, but okay. All right. Um, let's see here. The next one here, the remote participant must be able to ask and answer questions, comments made or second motions, raise objections. In other words, this mean, this is talking about that you have to be, your system has to be able to work and you have to be able to participate. Now, I think it also does note though that, because there is something in here that talks about if you do call in and your system breaks in the middle of it, that you would still be excused. It doesn't become an unexcused, but as part of this, being able to participate, um, remotely, you want to make, you know, the idea that you're fully able to engage in the conversation. So that's what this language is about up here.
Really quick.
Commissioner Young?
Sorry. Are we considered council members or do we have to change all of those words to commissioners or something?
This will be modified to fit the planning commission bylaws.
You might've said that. Sorry.
I'm just giving you the language in the council rules and procedures.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Nothing else on this one? All right. Uh, this is the one that's talking about the technical difficulties. And then you see highlighted here, considered an excused absence. If, um, you'll ha, if you're having technical and it's not working, then basically you need to drop out of the meeting, but it will be considered an excused absence. Cause you did try, technical things do happen. Um, and I think the idea at least with the council when they created this was not to punish somebody for technical difficulties when they were trying to participate. Any comments, thoughts?
Commissioner Meza?
Um, that last, um, sentence there, uh, presiding officer's termination of remote participation is subject to appeal pursuant to the rules of order. Is that trying to say that you can rejoin if possible? can rejoin if possible, or what, what is that trying to say?
I suspect that you may be correct on that.
Yeah, that part's not clear to me, but the way that it's reading to me says that you will be officially kicked out and have to be officially let back in.
So as I read that, and as the presiding officer, I would say that, you know, Commissioner X is no longer part of the meeting, and he is excused. If Commissioner X came back on half an hour later or something, the, one of the commissioners can, you know, appeal to reinstate him as part of the meeting, and that would be a vote of the commission.
That's not how it reads to me, it doesn't say anything about voting.
Well, but that's in Robert's rules, how you appeal a decision of the chair.
Yep. When there's an appeal, there's a vote.
Okay.
And I can add some language around this to clarify about reinstating and things on that, if that's helpful.
Okay, that makes sense, but you're not there to make the motion, so you're depending on somebody else to make the motion for you.
Correct.
Can we instead have something that says that if you appear back online, that...
No, because you're not part of the meeting.
Hold on, hold on, I didn't finish my statement. My suggestion is that if you appear back online, that a vote, a vote would be triggered automatically without someone having to make a motion.
Vice Chair Yabroth.
One of the problems I see is if, for whatever reason, it's technical or otherwise, you're in and out of the meeting, you're missing pieces in the meeting and the discussion. So having missed some of the discussion that may have gone on, you are in a difficult position to vote one way or the other, because you may have missed key elements. So I look at it and say, if you're, for whatever reason, you're technically terminated out of the meeting for whatever, you know, your phone service goes out, or whatever it happens to be, I think that's it. Otherwise, you'll have a situation because of thunderstorms, who knows what, the tooth fairy comes and does something, that it makes it so difficult, because you're in and out of the meeting, you're missing pieces of the meeting, that you can't make a good vote, because you may have missed a critical element. And that being the case, if it's a, if it's a close vote one way or another, that invalid vote may swing things to a position where you say, it's, in retrospect, we had an outcome that was not, not a good one. As much as I would like to see everybody participate, never have any technical difficulties, I think the problem of, of when you have technical difficulties and you're missing pieces of the meeting, I think that's probably it.
Can I just note from a practical standpoint, that if you can't get a motion to reinstate, then you're probably not going to get a majority vote to be able to be reinstated. So whether it's automatic or you have a motion, I mean, the motion means that there is some support for the person to be able to be reinstated. That's the one thing from, because if nobody's willing to make that motion, then you're not going to get the votes anyway.
I'm going to Commissioner Mick now.
Just trying to come back to the projected statement, and as the way I read it, saying if the ability to all remote and in-person attendees cannot be restored immediately, and then all the rest, I think that describes a situation when something happened that no one can anymore continue to be participating remotely. It is not about one person dropped and came back, that's my understanding.
Can you restate that, I wasn't following you on that.
When I read the slide that projected, I, the way I understand the section is about situation when all remote and in-person attendees' ability to communicate cannot be restored immediately. So the way I read this section is about something happened on the, on the meeting overall. It is not about one person technical issues, it's about the whole meeting technical difficulties. So no one can anymore hear each other, something like that. And in this case, I think that's where it should be terminated and considered an excused absence. So do you follow my logic? If that's something you agree with or not, that's how I interpret the text on the screen.
So, so how I interpreted it, if the ability for all remote and in-person attendees to communicate cannot be restored immediately, meaning that if somebody drops off technically, then everybody can't be, you can't hear that person, so everybody is not hearing that person. That's how I read it.
I see, okay.
I think that is the intent, that basically, if one person, if a person drops off, then that means not all, so that means that you would terminate that remote on there. I think that's the reason they use that language, because somebody, you might have just two people hearing each other or something potentially.
I think Commissioner Krebs was next, and then, and then Commissioner Lang, and then we'll go to Commissioner Mesa.
Just a practical question, if a remote participant drops off, in Zoom at least, they'll go back into the waiting room, and then, like, Yvonne will let them back in automatically? No? Okay. I was gonna just ask, if they were able to come back in, could they at least make their own motion to be reinstated, and then voted, and then removed if we don't pass it?
Well, even if you did let somebody in, if it was not passed, you can, we can still actually terminate, through Teams, you can actually terminate through the side now, somebody coming in.
Okay, Commissioner Lang.
Yeah, thank you, Chau. I have a question. You're my engineer, so I always think about this edge cases, right? So hypothetically speaking, say, we have a meeting that barely made a quorum, four people, right? And one of them was connected remotely, and in a certain unfortunate sequence of events, that guy got, that person got cut off and lost communication. And now, that remote participant was terminated by the presiding officer, and now the meeting only have three people in participation, which means that we no longer have a quorum. So what will happen in that case?
Meeting ends. Now, my understanding is, and we'd have to check at Robert's rules, that if you have a quorum at the beginning of the meeting, it's in place for the... No? Because you can't take, if there's, well, I mean, because you can always continue in terms of presentations and stuff like that, you can't take any actions.
Any actions.
Right. So the, in terms of if there was supposed to be an action taking place, that would end without a quorum, but that doesn't mean you can't still continue the meeting with three people, it's just that you wouldn't be allowed to take an action.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Mesa.
Thank you. I wanted to address the point that was made earlier about if you have technical difficulties, you might miss some of the discussion and not have all the context when it comes to taking the votes. Usually, you would do some research beforehand and come prepared to the meeting with some thoughts, and maybe even have an idea of how you're gonna vote to begin with. So I don't think that necessarily would prevent you from making an informed decision. But additionally, I can put forth a scenario that technical difficulties can occur also in person. And I'll give you one specifically that I think you might understand. Imagine that I wore a hearing aid, and my hearing aid stopped working, and I can no longer hear the discussion. It's the same thing as me being remote and not being able to hear the discussion. But in that scenario, you can still take a vote if you're in person, but the remote person will not be able to take a vote. So I think we're introducing a lot of bias here for not a lot of benefit. Thank you.
Anybody else on that? So I guess we'll need to kind of poll everybody on that. And I will start with, to my left, with Commissioner Young. Are you okay with how this is written as far as if you, if remotely you're not able to attend?
I'm okay with how it's written.
Okay. Vice Chair Yabroth?
I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Mesa?
I'm not okay with how it's worded. I would prefer if it was easier to rejoin in some shape or form, this seems too difficult.
Commissioner Krebs.
I would like to see an easier provision to get someone back into a meeting, but generally speaking, I'm okay with how it's worded.
Commissioner Lang.
Yeah, I kind of agree with what I missed, Commissioner Mesa was saying. I think this is a little bit more complicated than necessary, and I would see something that is easier for remote participation to rejoin.
And Commissioner Mick?
I'm okay.
You're okay with it as presented?
Yep.
Okay? And I'm also okay with it as presented, so we have four commissioners that are okay with it as presented.
I mean, I'll play with the language a little bit, to the point of trying to make some of this cleaner and clearer, but the concept and everything, I will retain. Oh, turned that off accidentally, sorry. All right, what was this next one? Yeah, this, this part here is just basically additional information, any information that's received, you have to be available for folks on the remote. A lot of this is our PowerPoint, you've got your packets. We don't necessarily have, if somebody gives written comments at the meeting, we won't necessarily have things like that available, but if the chair decides to read that into the record, that can always cover that if it's felt that it needs to be done. But anyway, see if there's any thoughts on this.
I'm not seeing anybody jump up, so apparently not, we're okay.
Okay. This next one, this is about notifying. I heard somebody earlier talk about the director deciding, it's like, no, this is not going to be for me to decide. Essentially, what it is, but what the main thing is, that you'll have the responsibility to notify, this is city clerk, in this case, it would be either Yvonne or myself, either through phone call, email, to let us know if you are not going to. The only question I would have on this is whether there needs to be a timeframe, council doesn't, I don't think, has it in there, but anyway, I would think that there needs to be adequate notice, not wait till the meeting to notify, but anyway, just kind of take us to these procedures here.
Commissioner Mesa.
Can I ask how we notify today that we'll be joining remotely? Do we have any process in place?
Email or phone. Or if you want to come in person, you can let us know, but usually email or phone.
Well, as far as I know, I've never notified anybody that I will be joining remotely.
And it's actually been a problem. So that's one of the reasons why the rules are in here, so that it's clear for everybody that we know that you're participating remotely before the meeting even starts.
Well, let me put it a different way. I usually click the yes button on the invite to notify you that that's my intent. That's why I'm wondering, like, what's the existing process? I guess you're saying there's, there is none?
Well, again, because there's, that's what this is put in place for, there should be a process, because, again, not notifying us whether you're gonna be remote is difficult, it actually creates trouble for, problems for us. So being notified is, would, is the appropriate thing to do. And again, you can do it through email, or you can do it through phone call. I mean, Yvonne sends the stuff out, asks about the meeting, and you can respond at that point, or if you don't know until more closely into the meeting, then you can notify in between when you get your packets and when the meeting happens.
So capturing your attendance in the meeting invite is not a way to communicate that?
No, because the question isn't about whether you're attending the meeting, the question is, are you attending remotely or not? And not, us not knowing if you're going to be remote or not causes difficulties for us in terms of trying to track what's going on, getting materials, making sure we're ready for the meeting and stuff.
Got it. And do we have a process for the in-person attendance? Like, do we also have to say if we're gonna be in person?
Yes, you need to, if you're not going to make a meeting in person, you don't need to tell us you're gonna be in person, that's the assumed, because that's kind of the standard.
That's what I'm trying to get at, I feel like if nobody has notified you, you should assume that they will be participating.
That's not the question here on the, here, we're talking about remote participation. It's not whether you're participating or not, the question is whether you're participating in person or remotely. And so the, to the way that the rules are put together here, the assumption is you're in person unless you notify us otherwise.
Correct. So that's what I'm trying to get at, so usually when you do things outside of here, like on a professional, like in your company or whatever, you track attendance via the meeting invite, especially for remote people. So that's what I'm trying to understand. Is that, does that not work for city staff?
Even with an internal meeting, we identify whether people are ahead of the meeting, we will identify whether people are attending remotely or in person. And that's, again, so we know what to expect and how to be prepared for the meeting. So it's generally common courtesy, and it works, and it helps us out knowing if you're going to be remote.
Got it, okay.
Otherwise, we just assume you're gonna be in person.
Got it. So I think what you're saying is that clicking that button doesn't let you know whether you'll be in person or remote.
You're just saying you're going to be at the meeting, that's what it's doing.
I have actually seen a feature, specifically in Teams, that will let you reply whether you will be remote or in person. I don't know if you guys have that enabled, but I have seen that. I'm just making a suggestion to make it easier. In general, I would like participating in the meetings to be easy and not put so many hurdles in place.
Well, again, I don't know what the hurdle is here, and again, I'm not trying to argue on this, but again, it's kind of a courtesy to let us know if you're not going to be in person, because it helps us out prepare for the meeting, and I'm not sure what burden it puts on people to let us know if you're going to participate remotely.
Clicking a button is very easy versus, I don't know, you're saying emailing or calling? I mean, those are more, it's not an undue burden, but it is more processed than just clicking a button.
Commissioner Young. I thought you had something to say. Okay. I thought you said, I saw you turn your mic on, I didn't see you turn it off. Vice Chair Yabroth.
Robert, from a practical standpoint, is there some point in time during the day where you say, you need to know by three o'clock, four o'clock, five o'clock, two o'clock, whatever?
It would be helpful if we knew by the close of business, so we have, because have at least like an hour notice would be good, but we can work with anything, I mean, if you want to go, if Planning Commission doesn't want to put a timeframe, we can work with it. It's just the more notice we have in advance, the better.
So basically, if we can let you know by five o'clock, that works for you?
Yeah, I think, generally, you think five o'clock?
Yeah, I'm already set up by then, but I can come back in here and switch things around.
Does that work, or do you need earlier time?
We can make five o'clock work, again, we can make any time work, whatever you guys want to do, but the more notes we have on it, the better.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Krebs, and then Commissioner Young.
Just to keep Yvonne happy, maybe we can say, absent unforeseen circumstances, we can notify this, you know, whoever, you or the city staff by three P.M. a day of the meeting, that will be appearing remotely. And the assumption is we're here in person, but we'll let you know by three unless, you know, there's car trouble after three, for example, like, sorry, I'm gonna be zooming or teaming.
Because there is always that unexpected, and I think everybody understands that.
Commissioner Young.
During the meeting, I took three minutes and sent Yvonne and Robert a note and said, I will miss the October ninth meeting. I might be remote, I will let you know ahead of time. It wasn't very painful. I also recognize that sometimes when we're absent, if we don't tell people ahead of time, people are sitting in the room going, I wonder if they're coming, do we excuse them, do we not excuse them? Do we excuse them, do we not excuse them? So I think the common courtesy is easy to do and it's value added. It recognizes that you put extra effort into planning for us being here. Yeah, it took me three minutes.
So can we, when you bring the language back, can you make it very clear that, you know, if you're going to be remote, you need to notify? I mean, I think it's pretty clear, but.
Do you want us to put any kind of a timeframe on it or just leave it open and it's like this?
That's up to you. I mean, I think, you know. But yeah, prior to the meeting starting, as soon as feasibly possible. Commissioner Meza?
Does, having this language, does that mean that if we do not notify, that we will be attending remotely, that we cannot attend remotely?
That could be subject to the appeal of the rest of the group, but the assumption would be that you're not attending if you, would be that you're not attending. If you, if you don't notify, we expect that you'd be in person. If you're not in person, then the assumption would be that you're not attending.
Okay. I mean, that's a fine assumption. My concern would be that if for some reason, last minute, you are unable to go in person, but you still can attend remotely, then we're preventing that from being an option, even if you're still within your two limit things.
I think, I thought we mentioned earlier that we do know that circumstances come up, like if a car breaks down or you mentioned childcare or something like that. Still, just like, like, you know, and so saying that you're going to be, that you're going to need to be remote because I had something come up, it's just letting everybody know. And we know that there's a special circumstance. The question isn't about the special circumstances, it's about the normal conditions.
I think what we're doing is we're putting expectations down, you know, to make sure that you know you should do that. We understand that sometimes that things are going to come up. And I don't think, you know, we're staff or the commission's going to punish you for that. But I think you have to have those. I don't see anywhere in there where it'll say, if you don't notify us by 6:55, we will not be allowed to be remote. That, that's not what we're saying in there. We're just saying, hey, be kind, here's what you should do. And we understand that, that at times, those change.
Well, that's not what I read from these words. Because if you're saying that you have to notify of your intent to join remotely, then I can infer that if you don't notify that you're going to join remotely, you won't be allowed to join remotely.
But we're not, we, we're going to put in there that it suggests that you notify. I mean, I disagree that it says you can't join.
It doesn't say that you can, though.
It just says you should notify the council of the need and reasons for the participation. It has no timeframe on there. And you could, I mean, technically on that, you could notify us five minutes before. What staff is saying, please don't do that.
I'm not trying to.
Special circumstance. If you have an emergency or something, it makes sense and so allow that flexibility in those special circumstances.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the rules are clear because I can see people trying to use this stuff to maybe kick people out or because they're not following the rules, so on and so forth. So I just want to make sure that we're very clear on what the rules are.
Vice Chair Yabroff?
Our enthusiasm seems unbounded. So I move that we extend the meeting till 10:30 and hopefully we can get this, these issues taken care of.
Second.
A second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Yabroff and a second by Commissioner Krebs to extend the meeting till 10:30. Is there any further discussion?
This is my last one.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I also add something?
Excuse me, just, the meeting is extended to 10:30.
Great, thank you. The second bold statement there actually says that failure to provide adequate notice of intent to participate remotely shall be grounds for denial. So it actually does say that you can be prevented from joining.
It says grounds for it, but again, the, if the majority of the Planning Commission wants to allow somebody still to participate, that's an ability that you could do. And we can write language in there if we want to have like an appeal thing on it.
I also would like to point out, it says adequate notice, it doesn't define what that is. And so I think that would depend on the circumstances.
We'll put some stuff in on it.
Yeah. So if, if you know, because you have a trip scheduled, then you should let them, people know ahead of time. If something comes up at the last minute, then obviously adequate is different.
So I think, yeah, I think that staff understands your concerns and will bring in a spat language that hopefully will answer that question and address it, so.
Yeah. I'd rather make it like more clear so it's obvious.
Right, and that's what they will do.
Thing.
And I think I've already mentioned that we will go through this and try to make the language cleaner and a little bit more clear. We're not going to copy exactly what the council stuff is. We'll try, we're, we're trying to capture the intent and the main pieces of it, like the two meetings and things. But then we'll, I'll rework the language in here to try to make it a little bit more. And then when you see the next copy, if we need to do further wordsmithing on it, that'll be an ability at the next meeting.
Yeah, and I would also like to see clarity on how you want the notification, whether that's via email or whatnot. To me, if you joined the meeting, say, 15 minutes early, the meeting hasn't started yet, and that would be a way of notifying you that I'm intending to join the meeting. So I just want to be clear, how you want that notification?
Yeah, I don't know if it really matters how we're notified, as long as we're being notified. If you want to use flag signals and we can understand that, that's fine, as long as it's just been adequate notice given to us. So, yeah, I don't know if we need to be that specific about email and call. I think most people have a variety of ways that they can do this.
So is joining before the meeting adequate notice?
Notifying us by a means of communication, either usually it's email or phone or come in person and then go or whatever, is probably as long as you're communicating.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to add something in there to, you can notify the chair, because you can always text the chair and, you know. Commissioner Lang?
I have a quick question. Robert mentioned that there's approval process. I wonder what that entails because technically you say, well, if the meeting is not in session, they don't, cannot get a vote. Say, well, hypothetically speaking, someone wants to participate remotely and if it needs to require the approval from a majority of the commission and then, which means that if we want, if this person wants to join remotely through Zoom, from Teams, the commissioner in question will have to be in the waiting room until the vote by the commission is done. Is that right?
So you're allowed to do two, the way right now it's been presented, you're allowed to do two remote meetings. So what you're presenting as a problem only becomes a problem if you're into your third or later in terms of your number of remote meetings. So again, you know, if it's last moment and it's one of those, and it's, you're within your two, that's being allocated. If that's where you end up, I don't, there's not going to be a problem. It's only if you're actually running past the allocated numbers, then that's when you're going to have to have permission of the majority of the Planning Commission to be able to participate remotely.
I see, thank you.
Commissioner Young?
Has something changed since I was here last? We, we were really good at telling somebody that if they were absent, it was acceptable and letting people know if we were going to be absent. This seems like we're really concerned about something that I think isn't going to happen very often. I see words like should and shall, I don't see must. I, I feel like there's something going on that makes people really uncomfortable with the process that doesn't seem to change what we're doing very much already. I think that's just a comment, I don't want a response. I just feel like we've not struggled with functioning as a team previously.
So I, I think, no, I won't say this. Do you have a good grasp of kind of what we're looking for on this?
I do, yeah. I mean, again, we're going to play around with the language.
Right, and, and you'll bring it back and then, then we can, when we actually have a draft that addresses us and they know how we operate, then we can get in and tweak it and say, you know, okay, we'll change this to that. But I think right now, we're just talking from the, you know, 30,000 foot level.
Yeah, then, yeah, exactly. In the next meeting, we can get into the wordsmithing on it. And we're technically, you know, normally they don't necessarily want us to do wordsmithing in a meeting because it can create a lot of confusion. Your bylaws is a place to do wordsmithing because you have to approve the actual language that goes in.
Robert, would it be helpful to you if, when you send out the draft and we get our packet, if we reviewed that and if we had any comments to send them to you ahead of time, so you could include it?
That would be helpful, yeah, because then I'll bring that up and.
Because then, then we can automatically put in here, oh, we suggested we put this in. So I would encourage us to, when the packet comes out, look through it. If we have any comments or anything on it, to, to send that to staff ahead of time and they can.
And the earlier you can get those comments in, because if you are able to do it, like, let's say we got the packet out on Thursday and you're able to do it by Monday, then I will bring alternative language and stuff for you to look at, at the meeting. But if you give, if it, if I don't get those comments until like the day late, like the afternoon of the meet, when the meeting's going to be held, then I probably won't have time to do it. But if you get comments to me earlier than that, I can bring alternative language to the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else on this slide? All right, let's see, what's this next one? Oh, yeah, this is an important one. And I actually noticed this with the council, because it got brought up as a rule, a procedural thing. So whenever you do have remote, in order to make sure that there's clarity in the record, roll call is the way you actually need to do the vote. It, it, it can't be just an aye and nay, it's going to actually have to be a roll call vote so that the record is very clear. Because sometimes it's not always clear what the person remotely is, if they're saying yea, nay, or abstain stuff. So for clarity purposes, it's a roll call vote anytime. And then this is also noting that if you do participate, the city is not going to reimburse you for any costs or anything that are associated with that. You, you'll have to bear those costs. And then the other one here is this here. The other part of this, this actually, you don't really get much of an option on because to not do, the one that says present to section 11.3, that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. If you start communicating outside of actually the video or if it's a phone call, you can't participate with texts and stuff to each other during a meeting. Even today, even without these rules, doing so is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So I might play a little bit more around, we need to make that a little bit more clear, but this is actually compliance with the Open Meetings Act, this provision, that one there specifically. And I think that may be the last slide. So any, but any comments, any thoughts on this? No, I have one more slide after this. Okay?
Not seeing any.
All right. And, oh, the last slide is just basically what I mentioned before. This is the language from your bylaws. So again, the precise language, you have to have a chance to review and have at least five days prior. So generally, we need to settle on this and it'll be the next meeting before you'll do your vote. But once you settle on the language, then we'll take it to the next meeting for the vote and adoption and add it into the bylaws formally, which after that, then we'll give everybody copies of the updated bylaws. That's all I've got, unless there's anything else.
Anything else on that? All right, very good. All right, that takes us to public comments. Mr. Miri, do you have any further comments for us tonight?
Yes, I do, that's why.
Just for the record, state your name, whether you live in the city or not.
My name is Ahmaud Amirian, I live in the city of Woodinville. That's why I respect, I started respecting, because I didn't know about him very much. And I appreciate that. You, he works so hard, seriously. I had very much conflict with him. But I tell you that sometime you turn around and you hear, and I appreciate that, I just want to tell you that in the public. Because if I make mistake, I rather correct it because I see how hard you work, regardless, regardless what you're going to do and, and I appreciate it. Second, it is, understanding the income. Really, people cannot buy houses. I've been a broken manager for 40 years. Before that, I was engineer. Therefore, for 40 years, I have sold houses around here. And I know, for example, veteran, how can they buy a house? I used to help them, I used to give part of my commission to them. But I'm just saying that, how can they? Right now, you want to buy, what, average in Woodinville, million point, 1.1? What the score footage? 1,100? How can somebody buy 1.1 million? How can young people buy it? Therefore, we have to look at it, modern laws and all of these things. Really, I think it comes to you to decide, to help people. I'm here and I'm going to be gone, but young people need you. All I can tell you that. Because somehow, city of Woodinville, where are you going to build? Where are you going, you're going to be, of course, if you put more houses in downtown, you're going to have lots of traffic. Common sense says, don't do that. Don't bring so much, but we, we have to, we do it. I think you have to make a good decision, common sense. That's all I can tell you. I think you're making good decision, you're discussing. Mr. Meza, bringing a point, you're all patient. What else can we ask? Thank you. I just want to tell you, I'm very proud of all of you. I appreciate that. I'm just one person and I'm sure that, how can I say? I've seen it all, I'm seeing a lot, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miri. With that, there being no further business, we are adjourned.